Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for August 31st, 2021. It's 6 o'clock and we will open the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. Welcome to the meeting tonight. Anybody have any words of wisdom or announcements or anything to share with anybody offhand?
I do want to share the Southampton Housing Authority is holding their community meeting Wednesday, September 22nd from 6:30 to 8:30. And it's a virtual meeting and all of the information is on these amazing flyers that are going out throughout the town. You can find it and it'll also be posted on the website. So look out for that information.
All right. And again, just everybody be sure we're speaking as good as we can to these mics with all this crazy, crazy barriers that we've got here, okay? So that everybody can hear. So that's great. So that's for the, is that for the housing production plan?
Yes, yes, it is. We're looking for community comments.
Great. All right. That sounds good. Any, any other things? I know I was asked if I might just announce that the Lions Club is having their chicken barbecue down at Conan Park on September 18th and tickets are available for $18. It's always a good event, lots of good food. So find somebody from the Lions Club or I believe it's online where you can phone into somebody to get a ticket. And I think they're also available at the Southampton Savings Bank if I'm not mistaken here in town. So hope to see a few of you there. Anything else? Okay. If not, all right. We don't have any public hearings or presentations tonight, so let's start with our newest thought of doing the open time for the public. Do we have anybody that would like to say anything? Kind of empty tonight. Okay. All right. So I believe our, we have our main focus tonight, to start with anyway, is the interviews for the two finalist candidates for the accountant position, which we're very fortunate to have them be here tonight and do that in person. And we didn't have the first one scheduled until 6:15. So we might start off with a couple of quickie things down the agenda if you don't mind, once we move this podium back out of the way here. Just careful of that cord.
Can we have a conversation about, are we all gonna ask questions?
Yes, yeah, I was gonna do that. So John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about the process while you're, you're playing handyman up there. Okay, so you, we have basically a list of 10 questions. It's gonna be the same questions for each candidate. And what we're gonna do is everybody will end up asking two questions and we're gonna go in order, I'm gonna go to my right first. So question one Francine, question two John, question three Reenie, question four Joy, question five myself, question six Francine, seven John, eight Reenie, nine Joy, and 10 and the 11, I'll take up at the end, okay? So basically the ideas will go down. Everybody will ask a question, come back, ask the other five questions. We'll probably have maybe four to five minutes probably in between interviews just to collect our thoughts and keep jotting some notes. You've got some spaces there to, to write some notes and your immediate thoughts after the interview. But then we'll go into interview two and kind of do the same, same process, same questions. And then after that, we will open up for general impressions of strengths and weaknesses, things that you'd like to talk about, about the candidates in terms of your impressions about their, their abilities for the job. And my goal is to actually be able to vote and select a candidate this evening. Okay? Sound good? Any questions on that? Yes?
It's only Select Board asking questions, correct?
Yes. Yep. So we've got the questions ahead of us and I think everybody's seen a draft of those, so I think we're okay. Do we have our first candidate yet or not?
We do.
We do. Okay, well.
Would you like me to bring him in?
Sure. Why don't we get started? We'll get a head start, why not? If he's ready, I mean, if he wants a few minutes, that's fine, but if he's ready. So I think we can just basically just jot down notes. I personally found later on that scoring doesn't really do as much, you know, one to three or one to five. It doesn't really get you too far. So I think people's general impressions and, and you know, reactions to the questions, I think, is as valid as anything else. Okay?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Thank you to John and Francine.
Yes, for all the preliminary interviews and...
There's a lot.
Just to mention, we had originally put forward four names and we'll discuss that later.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Sure.
We don't, yeah, we've got our top two. Yes. Good.
This is Bradley Haskins.
Hi, how do you do?
Hi. Hi Bradley, how are you? Good. Welcome to Southampton.
That's when we ask the questions?
Huh?
Should we just introduce ourselves?
Yes, I was gonna do that, yeah. So welcome to Southampton again. I guess you've been here at least once to meet with a couple of us. So I'm Chris Fowles. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. And I think you know these two, but I'll let them introduce themselves again.
Hi Bradley, Francine Tishman. We met. Good to see you.
Bradley, good to see you again. John Lumbra, Vice Chair.
Okay.
I'm Maureen Groden. Hi.
Hi Bradley, I'm Joy Piper.
Okay. Good. Well, welcome again and we're glad that you're in the top, top tier of our, of our candidates. And so tonight, I think Ed has already kind of explained the, the process. We're gonna go through and each one of us is gonna ask a question, so we'll kind of go down the road and ask questions. We've got about 10 questions, so we'll go down the road and then go back again. Okay? So let me open it up with Francine. And again, John, maybe your mic, yeah, just everybody have your mics close by. Thanks. Okay, Francine.
Okay, thank you. Okay Bradley, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you like to be considered for the Town Accountant Position here in Southampton.
I grew up in a accounting family. Both my parents and my two older sisters are accountants. My mom handled it all. They convinced me to pursue a career in accounting. I achieved a Bachelor's of Science in accounting and moved on to work at a county, who placed me at a health insurance company. And I've been in our business for 40 years. I touched all parts of accounting, mostly my clothes, but also accounts payable. Recently, I've been touching the contributable checks in 49, I mean, for the municipal accounts and some cash, but I'm a point in my career where I have the experience in accounting, but for a new challenge, municipal job, sounds interesting, or like community guys, excellent, working with people, budgets. That's something that interests me, mostly because recently my sister and mother joined the Westfield Taxpayers Association. I've been in the industry from Westfield. I, I go here and they talk to me about whatever people pay bills, about enterprise accounts, budgeted things. I found it very interesting and I like talking to them about it. So I saw this job and said, wow, that could be of use for me. So I'm...
Tammy's trying to say thank you. Is there a mic, mic not on?
Nobody can hear him.
Is the mic on yet?
As I know.
That's a good question. Sorry about that.
You tap it and see if it...
No.
Doesn't look like it.
Oh dear.
Go put the cords.
Ed, switch the plug with the podium plug.
Bradley, is that an idea, John?
Sorry.
Yep, sorry. I didn't see if you were signaling Tammy, I'm sorry.
I was like, I was texting, put this through.
Sorry, sorry.
Yep.
There we go.
Here we go, that's better.
Now it's working.
Okay. Do you wanna sum up?
Okay.
Keep on moving.
Our decision. Keep on moving.
Okay, it's my vote.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep on moving. Okay. Good. All right. So thanks for that. So just, we'll move on to your question two. John?
Bradley, what are some of the skills you bring that you believe would make you a good match for the job in Southampton? And is this a position that you feel that you can grow in professionally, learn additional skills, and expand your current accounting knowledge?
So I think my biggest skills are my organization and scheduling skills. I'm very on time, I plan out today, make sure I have the deadlines. Another big skill is I enjoy talking to my coworkers. I try to make their lives as easy as possible. So with emails, I try to give them as context as I can when I'm replying to them or sending them an email or something else. And yes, I do see growth if I do get this job. The new challenge, it's municipal job, it's not a corporate accounting, it's somewhat really different. It's not one month and close every month. It's what year, what year, what, and it's much different. I recommend a lot. Another skill I have is I work with other departments at my current job and I make a relationship with people outside of the departments. And if they see me as a representative department, they come to me first and I then direct questions accordingly. I do enjoy working with departments, helping them out with getting a report or something about budgets.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Reenie?
Hi. Can you describe a specific work experience that you've had when your organizational and interpersonal skills have contributed to a successful outcome? And conversely, can you describe a time where you wish you could have done things differently?
Conflict where I put my skills to test and... All right. What do you think?
Take your time.
Ban property issues where we send out letters about outstanding checks and members get back to us, tell us that yes, we do owe them the money. And I think I've really grown and been better at talking on the phone. So there was one member named Jessica, I know her name, she called me so many times that she was very upset about this process that it took so long. So I was, my skills of calming her down and telling her every day that yes, we have her letter back and we're going to reach the check as soon as possible, I assure her, and we put it down. And the problem's solved because of my ability to calm her down and she didn't slight the problem. Oh, a problem where I wish, what was the second part of that question?
It was, conversely, a time when you wish you could have done things differently. Maybe things didn't turn out quite as well as you had wanted to and maybe you would have done things differently.
There's just issues with timing and deadlines that my department would face due to being understaffed or people being absent or being overworked. And it really comes down to communication that I wish my department had at certain times, that it would tell others that they're stressed or just give a heads up of when they need help. I learned that I need to reach out to people when I need help. I can't just put it all on myself, calm down, try to do it myself. I need to reach out to other people at certain times. So communication is a huge key to success.
Thank you.
Okay. Bradley, given that you have not worked with municipal accounting, how would you go about improving your knowledge and training in regards to the area of municipal accounting field?
Of course, I would listen to the person in charge of me, my manager, learn as much as I can. There's supplemental materials, the standard operating procedures, the documentation I can study. I would reach out to that first, ask the questions, going along. In my free time, I might watch a video about municipal accounting. I might just buy the book and read. I would want to get my head in the right position to be successful with health area.
Thank you.
Okay. And which of your, your previous experiences, although they, we know that they were not in municipal government, do you feel closely, most closely resembles what you would be doing in this position? And why would that, how does that resemble that?
I touched all parts of accounting and mostly all the clothes, but I did touch accounts payables, pay bills, looking at invoices on people. But I also, every month, I assign certain journal accounts that I'm in charge of that I need to explain why it's over budget, why it's a different, why it's gone off of the trend. So I would research and explain that, oh, there's a $50,000 invoice that went in March and that's why it went so above budget. I have the experience of working with other departments, getting them the help they need, making relationships outside my department.
Okay.
And also for supervising, I know this is assistant accounting, I would work it. I did supervise a temporary employee to take over accounts payable for a super short continued three weeks. I supervised everything about accounts payable. Work and asking questions. Later on, I had to train the coworker to take over parts of my job on claims checks. So I taught her everything I'd say, did introductory courses for her. Had big meetings with her, walked her through, she was there for her questions.
Okay. Make it. Thanks.
Francine?
Okay. All right Bradley, as the Town Accountant, how do you envision interacting with other department heads and what steps would you take to make sure that your peers also follow departmental policies and procedures in regards to budgeting and expenditures?
So I think the best form of communication is in person, so I want to talk to them in person as much as possible. But you know, I get it, being very clear what they need to do and what they need from me. I would set, stress what I need from them and I would give them everything they need. When they step out of line or, no, step out of line, but made a mistake, I would be as polite and showing them why it's wrong and showing them how they can correct it. Want to talk to them in person about that, not just somebody emailing saying, fix this. I would explain, maybe somebody, the documents they need, but go to them in person and walk them through what they need.
Okay. Thank you.
For this question, I have a, I'm gonna read a hypothetical scenario followed by a follow-up question. So the scenario is the town's auditing firm gives you a notice of comment that, as also noted in prior years in the annual audit, the town contracts with an outside company to bill and collect for ambulance services. The outside company maintains the database and reports amounts billed, collected, and owed to the town. Most payments, but not all, for the services are received by the company who periodically, but not routinely, wire the funds collected directly into the town bank account. Based on that scenario, what are your initial thoughts on how to enhance internal controls? And I can repeat the scenario if you want.
Yeah, I understand. This interrupted, yes.
Yeah. So I'll just repeat the question and then I'll read the scenario again for you, okay? So based on what I'm about to read, what are your initial thoughts on how to enhance internal controls? The town's auditing firm gives you a notice of comment that, as also noted in prior years, the town contracts with an outside company to bill and collect for ambulance services. The outside company maintains the database and reports amounts billed, collected, and owed to the town. Most payments, but not all, for the services are received by the company who periodically, but not routinely, wire the funds collected directly into the town bank account.
I would first talk to my manager, see what their thoughts are, but I think we would want to work with that outside vendor to make it consistent how we're getting the money, so it's not confusing that we get it somewhere in another places. We want to get it in a direction, bank deposit, we want just that, or we want a check. I think it would be worth using with multiple types of payments, is that what I'm interpreting in that scenario? Oh, I would think, I would also want to communicate with that part, that outside vendor, see what they could do for us. That's a recurring problem. We would want more from them. I would work with my manager and kind of correct this problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi there. So we believe that the Town Accountant Position is central in town government. It requires familiarity with laws and regulations, attention to detail, organizational skills, confidentiality, and adherence to operational deadlines. I know you spoke a little bit about this, but please share your skills and abilities in these areas.
I do have great scheduling. I make big schedules internally for my own personal use, but like in my department, we would have a big file of what we need to do every day of the month and we update that accordingly. So I make my notes, I have my own files of what I need to do. In terms of detail orientation, yes, I do look at everything. I don't want to overlook things because one little problem can become something bigger later on. So...
Confidentiality and deadlines.
Deadlines, yes. I'm very, try to get on time, maybe even a day or two before the deadline. I don't want to procrastinate. I want to get there. Confidentiality, I'm not a big talker, so I don't spread secrets. I don't do that seriously. I don't want to jeopardize anything or make myself look bad, make others look bad. So keep what I need to, it to myself.
Thank you.
Joy?
Bradley, what do you envision as the responsibility of the Town Accountant in planning and managing the town's annual budget?
I would think I would be aware of all the department's budgets and keep an eye on what's happening and maybe once or twice a month, send them each department a report showing the progress and maybe give them advice of how to stick to that budget or explain why they're over budget. I would just communicate monthly or bi-monthly, whatever, tell them what they need to know and be there for them if any questions they have.
Okay. Okay. So I think, as you know Bradley, this is a four-day, 30-hour week, excuse me, position at the present time. It may be, who knows, if at a later date, the town office has decided to be open five days or work later on one, one night a week, would that be any kind of an issue for you? Would that be, pose a problem?
I'm used to working 40 hours a week, Monday to Friday. Usually, I work 48 hours a week, so I usually, at my current rate, I'm working 7:20 in the morning to 4:50 at night. And then sometimes on Fridays, I get off early. But I'm used to long work, long hours, a lot of work to do, over 120 journal entries every month. So I'm not scared of work, I'm not scared of working overtime, and I don't take a lot of time off. In the four, in years and four months I've been at my company, I've taken, I'm gonna have three days taken off. I had a snow day when I was temporary and I didn't, I wasn't aware that everyone else went in the office. I had a jury duty day, which I still went in the office during lunchtime and did some work. And this upcoming Friday, I'm traveling for a wedding. So this is my three days off. I have plenty of energy to work, I'm not...
Okay. All right. So I think that's, that's pretty much all the questions that we had to ask. Do you have any questions for any of us about the job or just the environment in general of working here in Town Hall? Anything?
I'm excited for this chance and I'm very grateful that you all brought me here.
Okay. All right. Good. I'll settle with everybody else.
Yeah, thanks much Bradley.
Okay. Good. Thanks Bradley. Appreciate you coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's just gather a couple of minutes and just jot your notes and stuff and we won't do any discussion now, we'll wait until...
Can I just make a recommendation that we put the set of questions on the table?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, my only concern, we didn't provide that to Bradley.
We're not being fair.
Because I think, I think you couldn't hear it all or went too fast and for anybody, myself included.
I agree, we should have thought of that.
Yeah, we should have had that.
As well as getting the mic organized. Yeah, but I think we have to be consistent unfortunately.
Yep, I agree.
So just a thought for the future, Ed, since we said that we give the written questions to them so that they can see rather than having to hear us through our masks as well, but we won't do it now for, for the second one because we want to be consistent obviously. But our mic is working okay? Yeah?
Seems to be.
As far as we know?
Hopefully we'll get a adjustment. Maybe it's...
Okay.
Okay.
And just hopefully after tonight, Chris, we won't have to do this for another 20 years.
You think?
I don't want to hear about next time.
Yeah, really. So just let's take a few minutes. We weren't expecting the other person for another 15 minutes or so, but they might be early too. So just let's take a couple of minutes and just jot your notes if you didn't finish doing what you were doing. Keep an eye out for candidate number two. Is our person there?
Not yet.
Not yet. All right. Then let's, how about if we do a couple of things in the interim here? Can we do the Town Administrator Report maybe?
I can do that, sir.
Sure. We have everybody.
I want to let you know that the contractor, HM Noon's and Sons, for the construction of the two new pickleball courts in Conan Park contacted me today and they are going to be able to perform the construction work sooner than they had originally thought. So we will be scheduling a pre-construction meeting with them sometime between September 9th and the 16th, depending on everyone's availability.
Ed, do that, does that mean that they anticipate the project completing that much sooner or no? Still the same completion time?
Depending on if they're, you know, held back for availability of some of the construction materials and the biggest one that is, from my understanding, right now from all projects is fence posts and fencing. But other than that, I would anticipate if they're able to start the project early that they're also going to complete it earlier than the, I think it was the, I think we had put it December 1st deadline on it, so...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. But after we have our pre-construction meeting and actually got a work schedule, I can give you all a better idea of that. Our interim Town Accountant Regina Gillis has given her notice to take another position. Her last day will be September 9th. She has offered to do some overlap training with her successors when she is available, either on Friday evenings or on a weekend day during the daytime. And with all the necessary steps and the timelines that accompany them for the acquisition of the right-of-way from the Pioneer Valley Railroad for the Greenway, I am reaching out to the state to see if it would be possible to have a grant extension for... to see if it would be possible to have a grant extension for the $100,000 Mass Trails Grant we received for this to go into a second fiscal year. So I'll let you know how that goes also.
And what's the due date currently?
June 30th, 2022. And then lastly, the assessors' office will be open on Tuesdays from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and also on Wednesdays from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. While they are looking to fill the principal assessor vacancy, however, they are looking at expanding these office hours to be a little bit longer currently. And then upcoming, we have select board meetings in September scheduled for the 14th and the 28th.
Yeah, pretty good. Ed, what was the end date of the current contract with Regina?
We don't have a contract with...
But we did approve a 12-week...
Yes, it would have been, this would have gone to September 14th.
And is there any obligation in terms of keeping that deadline?
No, she has given two weeks' notice, which, you know, we were obliged to give her also. So I'd say we're good there.
Okay.
And the one thing you make and want to consider if she's going to leave on the 9th later in the meeting at some point, maybe under any other business, you may want to consider appointing myself again as interim town accountant, just for signing abilities, you know, sometime from September 9th, maybe to the end of September until we have our new town accountant on board. And hopefully we'll get them on board before the end of September, but, you know, I can always resign the position at that point when they become appointed.
And hopefully we'll have the assistant accountant on board before that, right?
Absolutely.
So, but that person would not have necessary signing authorities?
They would have signing authority also to act in absence of the town accountant.
We did, we did a vote. Have you have signing authorities? Did that end?
It did.
Okay, so it was time limit, okay.
Okay. Well, maybe remind us as we get toward the end of things because we don't forget it. Just while we're on the Mass Trails, I know you were reaching out to the state too about the other Mass Trails with ComCom. Did they send us, send the contract on that? Do you know anything about that, Ed?
I, I will have to follow up. I called their office to our contact last Friday and left a voice message asking about that, and I have not heard back. So I'm not sure if maybe Amanda's on vacation or not. So I will leave, I will call the office again, and I'll also shoot her an email.
Okay. So I think ComCom is hoping to sign that contract too for their Mass Trails Grant, which they had not seen the last I knew. And then just lastly, on my, my favorite, Sidewalk Cemetery, anything moving on that in terms of contracting a person so we can get that one moving?
Well, I'm still working on the bid documents. We, the state is working, the Mass DOT has reached the 25% level for the design that StanTech has done for our permit to work there. Generally, the work with the, with the contractor cannot begin until that's finalized. So Richard from StanTech is going to reach out to them to, you know, see if, at least it's all right with them for us to be, be out to bid and for Mass DOT to attend a, what would be a pre-bid conference meeting.
That would be our district people at DOT?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, this was supposed to be an expedited process, so I hope they don't backtrack now and make it complicated for us. One would hope. Okay. All right.
Can I just ask, I, I know the Board of Assessors is really responsible for recruiting, but do you have any information to update us about where they might be in the process?
Yeah, so I'm happy to do that to the report.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on select board reports. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, why don't we, assuming we don't have anybody yet, let's take a stab at select board reports. So, Renee, why don't you go ahead with that?
Well, mine are easy because the COA is meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock. They haven't met since we met. The CPC hasn't met, they are meeting September 8th at 5 o'clock. I'm planning to set up a public safety committee meeting in September. And then the Board of Assessors have met multiple times, a lot during the day, so I haven't as much been able to attend. But we have a couple PCFs tonight to increase Janine Domina's hours so that the hours of the office can be open longer. So there's an emergency PCF and also a interim one. And they are, I had an executive session meeting, which I did not attend, and they are discussing a number of opportunities, not only to get a permanent principal assessor, but also an interim plan to have somebody come in. In the meantime, they are handling the business of the office. I'm just impressed by this particular board and their expertise. I think that they're taking care of the business for now, and I think we'll probably hear something sooner rather than later.
Great.
Good to hear.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, we're down at this end. Joy, would you like to go with your reports?
Sure. Conservation...
Be sure to speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry. Conservation Commission met on August 16th. They still are looking for people to help with trail cleanups and marking property boundaries on the trails and looking to get signage up on the different trails. So if you are interested in volunteering, please reach out to the Conservation Commission. They, most of it was just regular business in regards to checking in on the grant projects at Man Hand Meadows. There was an NOI meeting for Man Hand that week. I'm, I'm not sure if there, there will be an update next week or the week after that in regards to that. And they did have a question in regards to some monies from the Treasurers Report. There was $5,000 owed from the town taking down the sign on Strong Road to, that was owed to Southampton Conservation Commission. So they wanted to get a report on that, but we might wait till we get the accountant in.
That was for when the trees were taken down?
Yeah, when the trees were taken down.
That money was, I remember seeing that. That money was transferred into...
Right.
Into their account.
I think they may have paid it from a different account from what I told them to pay it from, but I will check on that.
Okay, yeah, because they had, that needs to be accounted for. And that was all in regards to the Conservation Commission. Their next meeting is actually September 20th. Planning Board met. They actually will be changing, they were working with one consultant who last week was their last, last meeting. We will be looking at hiring a different consultant to work on the bylaws and just working through those. So I'm pretty excited, actually, to take a look at those.
These are the zoning bylaws?
The zoning bylaws, yes, the zoning bylaws. There was a lot of discussions in regards to the master plan and working that in with the bylaws and certain projects and the storm water permits within the bylaws and discussions with the MS4 project. So if you have any questions about that, Planning Board is discussing lid and stormwater application, or the stormwater and how it relates to the bylaws. And Housing Authority met as well. They're very busy. They're, they have a, their next meeting is September 21st to discuss the community meeting on September 22nd. And they're really excited to get community comments in regards to the housing production plan. So everyone who's interested, please go find the Zoom link. It'll be posted on the town website and on different flyers around town. We would love to hear their input. So, and that was us.
Okay. Very good.
I have a question. How often, I know you just joined, so you may not know this, but how often are the planning board's bylaws, the zoning bylaws updated? Do you know? I mean, is this a cyclic thing? Is that why they're doing it now?
I think it's, it's been going on. The review of them has been happening for over a year. So it's been happening for a while. Chunks of it have happened, and then COVID made it stop. And, but it's been a while since they've been updated.
Do they similarly have to be approved by town meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's the same process that town bylaws need for approval, except for a zoning bylaw would have to pass town meeting by a two-thirds vote rather than a regular town bylaw by a majority vote.
And when they are hiring a consultant to do this, is this an attorney? Or is this somebody that is an expert on zoning bylaws? And do they then have to run them by our attorney?
I believe that the previous consultant referred us to this person who was previously a city planner. So they have expertise in city planning and engineering and, and are very familiar. They're retired, they just retired. So they're very familiar with...
I think it's more of an engineering background from what I know, not necessarily a legal background.
Yeah, engineering and understanding.
That's just a little...
How a city, municipality, with municipal experience.
And does this come out of the planning board budget, which is not that much? Like, isn't it like $500 or something? How much is the planning board budget? Is it like 500 or 5,000? I forget.
I'd have to go take a look at that.
Any consultants they hire, do they have revolving accounts?
They've got a revolving fund.
They have a revolving fund, so...
That's how they use some of their money, I believe, is to hire a consultant through the revolving fund that the planning board manages.
That was my understanding, that it was...
But then when they're basically, I will say semi-finalized, they will have to be reviewed by town council. And that will have a cost to the legal budget.
At some point, doesn't have to be now, but at some point, I'd like to have a discussion about how we access our attorney for what purposes, and do other committees and other people have the right to go right to the attorney, or is it all under the auspices of the select board?
It's all under the auspices of the select board. So anybody want, that wants to...
So the planning board would have to come to us and say, we want these bylaws approved before the next town meeting, and then the process would be that they would, we would approve it, and then it would go to the attorney?
Correct.
They'd have to review it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I got a high sign from Judy out there, so I think, do you have long reports, short reports?
Mine's, I would say mine is more longer than short.
Longer than short, all right. And I'm going to propose we come back to the reports. Let's have our second candidate.
I agree.
Kind of, kind of a...
Yeah, good idea.
Up and, up and down meeting here, but I think we'll just take the timing as it goes.
That makes sense.
They'll do the same order.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we just have to be mindful that they're not reading these, so we need to read them a little, a little more slowly.
Yeah, good point.
So that they can follow the question.
Yeah, they were not given the questions ahead of time. I guess that's something we could have done, too, in terms of improving our systems.
This is Scott Reed.
Okay, very good. Hi, Scott. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Welcome to Southampton and Southampton's Town Hall and hopefully a microphone that works. Anyway, I am Chris Falls, chairman of the Select Board, and I believe you've met a couple of our colleagues, but I'll let everybody reintroduce themselves and introduce the new folks as well. So go ahead.
Hi, Scott. Francine Tishman. At the time, we knew that we weren't wearing masks. We were much more recognizable than one another.
Okay.
Scott, thanks for coming back. John Lumber, Vice Chair.
I'm Maureen Groden. Hi.
Hi, I'm Joy Piper.
Hi.
Good. Well, welcome. And we appreciate your being available tonight to go through this, this round of interviews. We have about 10 questions for you, and what we thought we would do is just go down one by one by one. Everybody ask a question and go back through it again. And so we'll do that. And I'm going to start with Francine.
Okay. All right, Scott. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be considered for the town accountant position in here in Southampton.
So I live in Westfield, grew up in Springfield, so I'm from the area. I, you know, throughout my, I graduated from Elms College and then progressed through my career from a job doing AP payroll stuff, nursery business in Stuff Field, moved down to sort of the Boston area. And my last job was at Pro Antec, which is in Westfield, a big manufacturing company. I left there in March for, you know, various reasons, but the main was to be more with my family. I was working a lot of hours, 50 to 60 hours a week. And then when my kids started asking me why I'm working holidays and why I'm on vacation and I'm working, it got to a point where I thought about my life and my career. And I'm at a point now where, you know, I want a job that's stable, but then when I saw the town in Southampton job came up, I knew that I had the qualifications for the job. And I felt like it was a right fit for myself and my family, the hours-wise, the commitment-wise, that, you know, it was a good part in my, my life and my career to kind of take this opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What are some of the skills you bring that you believe would make you a good match for the job in Southampton? And is this a position that you feel that you can grow in professionally, learn additional skills, and expand your current accounting knowledge?
I'm very detail-oriented, hardworking. So I think those are the things, you know, my main skills were in accounting, you know, you have to have attention to detail, make sure all your accounts are correct, all your budgets are in line. You know, I think the biggest area I mentioned in the first interview was learning all the municipal rules and stuff. So I think that's where, you know, where I can grow and where I'll need to grow if I get this position. I'll need to continue to learn all those rules, and I know they're ever-changing, so to keep up with all the rules and functions of the town.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ready?
Yeah. Can you describe a work experience that you had when your organizational and interpersonal skills have contributed to a successful outcome? And conversely, can you describe a time when you wish you would have done things differently?
So at my last company, there were a couple of projects I did, I was involved in that were successful. One of my main, when I first took on, was learning the, our new system. They were upgrading their accounting system. You know, I took that on. I learned it from front end to back end, all the modules of the accounting system, and I became the leader of that. I traveled to various plants we had, and I trained other accounting departments. Another one was in our AP, we implemented a non-paperless approval system. So when I first got there, there was 50 filing cabinets that had all previous invoices that we implemented where, through IT, they developed a system where we could send out invoices for approval that came back. Everything was scanned into the system, so that way we didn't have filing cabinets anymore. I think, you know, the biggest, you know, what I wish I could have done more in, you know, towards the end of my career when I got promoted to controller, I wish I spoke up more to get the extra training I needed before my boss retired and just to tell them more on what was going on and how, you know, the 50 to 60 hour a week work weeks were contributing health-wise to myself and to my family. You know, that was kind of my biggest regret there.
Hi, Scott. Given that you have not worked with municipal accounting, how would you go about improving your knowledge and training in the municipal accounting field?
So I, I mean, I would go online, research. I do have contacts. So I, Matt Barnes, who heads up Westfield, I coached little league with him. I have actually been in communication with him about, you know, how it is, what's, what's the best way to go about things. So I think, you know, the biggest thing will be going online, taking, you know, if there's courses out there, taking courses, and then reaching out to people and contacts and, you know, people that might have some knowledge are ready to help me get through the initial stages and then from there continue to grow.
Okay. And Scott, through your various experiences, though they have not been in municipal government, what do you feel most closely resembles this position and why or how?
I mean, I think all the roles I've had kind of will help with this role. I mean, I, from start, when I first started out of college to when I currently have my position, I've had all aspects of accounting from AP to AR to payroll, to general ledgers, to budgeting, to capital expenditure. to budgeting, to capital expenditures. So I think throughout my career, I've grown and I've learned many facets of accounting that will help me in this position. I've also managed people, so like my last position, I managed five different employees, and some were at various sites. So I think that will allow me to step into this role.
Okay, thank you. Francine?
Okay. As the town accountant, how do you envision interacting with the other department heads? And what steps would you take to make sure that your peers also follow departmental policies and procedures in regards to budgeting and expenditures?
So for me, you know, my first steps would be when I come in to kind of get to know everyone, you know, I'm, you know, a pretty open person, I'm pretty personable, I, you know, I believe in team from growing up, playing sports to now coaching my kids. I think, you know, it's important to build those relationships, have trust in each other. So I think building those relationships first, and then from there, you know, you work together as a team to kind of, you know, with budgeting and, you know, sharing of information and kind of getting with them to see what kind of information they get now and if there's anything else that they could use or benefit from in the future that I can maybe provide.
Okay, and John?
Okay, so this one, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you the question first, and then I'm going to read us a hypothetical scenario, right? So the question is, what are your initial thoughts on how to enhance internal controls? So the hypothetical scenario, the town's auditing firm gives you a notice of comment that as also noted in prior years, the town contracts with an outside company to bill and collect for ambulance services. The outside company maintains the database and reports amounts billed, collected, and owed to the town. Most payments, but not all, for the services are received by the company who periodically, but not routinely, wire funds collected directly into the town's bank account. What are your initial thoughts on how to enhance internal controls?
Oh, I think, you know, from hearing that, you know, I think, I think, you know, we have to work together, first off, you know, learning the backend of the systems and see if there's anything that we can do to either bring that in-house or if there's controls around reporting wise, you know, and make sure we're getting the correct information so we can match up, you know, when we get the payments or the payments are made, that, you know, it's the correct amounts and we're not missing anything, that they're not, you know, holding back funds or anything. So I think it's learning the systems first and then the controls around how we're getting reporting and make sure that we're collecting what we, you know, what we should be.
Okay.
Okay, then ready?
We believe that the town accountant position is central in town government. It requires familiarity with laws and regulations, attention to detail, organizational skills, confidentiality, and adherence to operational deadlines. Can you share your skills and abilities in this area, in these areas? I think you've mentioned a few of them, but.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, I think with accounting, you know, attention to detail is, you know, number one, you know, budgets are important. So attention to detail of all the bills and, you know, what we're billing out, you know, to make sure we're in line with budget or under budget. The other skills, can you, sorry, can you?
Yeah, familiarity with laws and regulations, organizational skills, confidentiality, and operational deadlines.
So the, you know, the learning laws and stuff, I think I, you know, I mean, I know that's the biggest thing stepping into this role is to get up to speed on all those laws and that's, you know, I'm willing to learn all those deadlines. I mentioned in my first interview, I think it's important, so as people are coming to me, I usually come into a day, you know, knowing kind of what's on the schedule. And if people come to me and say, oh, we need this report, you know, I will go to them and ask them, you know, when is it, do they need it right now? You know, so I can fit that into the schedule. You know, the, so I think those are the main, you know, reason, you know, like, I think I could come up with the most skills.
Okay, okay, enjoy.
What do you envision as the responsibility of the town accountant in planning and managing the town's annual budget?
So I think, you know, first is, you know, get up to speed on everything that's happened in the past and then, you know, build those relationships with each of the departments so that way we can kind of cover, you know, the budget as it is right now and then kind of dive into all the little things that are going into those expenses so we can analyze and see if there's, you know, other ways to, you know, different vendors, anything that can improve those budgets. But I think first would be kind of see how the process has gone in the past and then kind of reevaluate to see what, what can be done differently, what can, if there's better, you know, options. And then, like I mentioned, you know, building those relationships with each of those department heads so we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So I think as you probably knew through the previous interview, this is basically a four-day-a-week, thirty-hour per-week position. If at a later date, we decide that the town offices might be open for five days, or we might end up having evening meetings or something like that, how would this, would this be an issue for you? Would this?
No, that wouldn't be an issue. I mean, I'm just, you know, like I said, working five days a week and evening meetings wouldn't be an issue of the town's meetings.
Okay. So I think that's pretty much everybody's questions. Do you have some questions for us?
I think, you know, from my first interview, I had a couple of kind of questions, so maybe you guys, so what do you guys see as the biggest challenges for someone coming into this role? And I know Francine and John answered on the first interview, so I didn't know, they kind of, they were the one who kind of agreed on it, but I didn't know what your take on what the big challenges would be.
Sure, all right. Would anybody like to take that? You guys.
We already did.
You already did, so I'll go to this side if anybody would like to, but, all right.
I think the biggest challenge, I think you hit on it on one of your answers actually was looking at the past accounting, you know, we're a small town and a lot has been going on and we haven't had an accountant for a while. So I think that, that you, you hit on that, that's going to be a really important thing. And so, yeah, I think that's the biggest thing.
Everybody? Yeah, ready?
I think probably the, you know, the municipal side, you know, just the laws, regulations, you know, all the state requirements and things like that. I mean, that's probably going to be the learning curve. But also, it's, you know, we're like a lot of other small towns that don't get enough money from the state, you know, we're constantly trying to balance a budget and, you know, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul kind of a thing. And the last several years have been really challenging. So we actually have a committee that's forming to sort of look at, you know, what can we do to increase revenue, you know, manage expense, regionalize services, I mean, all of that. So I just think the budget crisis, not to mention COVID and all the other challenges that everybody's had. It's just, you know, but it's a beautiful town, I always say that, I'm happy I landed here. So it's a nice little town, but there's challenges.
Yeah, and I think just to add, you know, I think we have decided amongst ourselves at select board that the financial health of the town is really the key, the key driver for us this year in terms of our priorities and what we want to really focus on. And it's been hard not having a full-time accountant and an assistant accountant, those have been filled in, but, you know, not, or the accountant position has been filled, obviously, over the past few months, but certainly not as many hours as is needed. There is no doubt that the hours that have been allocated do not meet the need for the job that has been done thus far. And so there's probably a fair amount of catch-up, there's, there's things that have probably got to go back and, you know, be corrected, or who knows? But I mean, there's, there's, I think a lot of demands and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people probably wanting to know their, their own department status. And so I think your, your comment in terms of, you know, sort of finding out and reaching out to, to the departments to find out what, what's going okay for them and how they might see, see something improved would be a story there too. But I think a lot of, of the departments just are not quite sure how they're spending their money yet. They're, they don't feel like they're getting reports adequately, and we too at select board. So we, we have a challenge with our income and our revenue reports and, you know, just trying to get things timely. So I think timeliness and deadlines and all those kinds of things are really important to all of us probably, so. Okay. Anything else offhand? If not, all right, well, thank you, Scott. Appreciate you coming in tonight. All right.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take just a second or two here. Everybody kind of ready? Or yet? Need another minute or two? Everybody else set? Okay. So my thought, I guess, and I'm open to suggestions, my thought was going to be to just go down candidate by candidate rather than question by question, not necessarily doing it laterally, but going candidate by candidate and getting first thoughts and impressions on that. So let's take Bradley. And who would like to start with some just overview, general impressions, comments, thoughts about his answers, et cetera? Who would like to begin? Anybody offhand? Since you guys have seen him before, maybe we'll start down at this end. Anybody reading or Joy? Yeah, Joy, would you like to?
I thought he was really, you can tell, he, he seems very smart, lots of potential. And, yeah, I mean, I thought, I, I thought he would be someone who would be great to work with. I'm just unsure about him in this, like, more of a department head position.
I didn't hear the last thing you said.
I'm not, I'm, I don't, I'm not confident in putting him in a department head position.
Alex?
I think he is very likable, and I think that he, I can tell that he's a very smart, I can tell that he's a very hard worker. I can tell that he would be very detail-oriented and he would work really hard to do this job well. I think he lacks experience in, well, municipal accounting like they both do, but even more so, like, very little supervisor experience. And I think that, I think the learning curve would be a little steep.
Okay. Either you get it, Francine or John?
Yeah, I mean, we've, I've had the benefit of seeing him twice. And in his first interview, and I'll bring this up, I mean, he gave a very, gave very precise answers. He described situations in which he, because things were disorganized, he would develop a system in order, in order to put not just the accounting department, but everybody else on a schedule and a track so that everything was, you know, coming together so that timeliness and accuracy, you know, was a benefit of, of the system that he, he created. So I was, I was very impressed with that and also with his dedication, which I think came out again, came out again today.
Yeah.
I think, well, first of my comments, so I think, I think Bradley's a very strong candidate. The, of the two that we have, I agree with Maureen, it would be great to have somebody that has, you know, X number of years of municipal experience, but that's not what we have. There is one other piece of information that we, that we had at that committee level that was part of the resume. So perhaps Ed could share what we already know with the three of you, their assessments that was part of the Indeed process, just so you guys have the same information.
Sure. As far as the assessment, the accounting and bookkeeping assessments that Indeed did as part of the, the process of moving the candidates through to us is Bradley had the highest assessment you can have in both accounting and bookkeeping, which was level five. Scott's was weaker in the direct accounting field. I believe he came out at a level, I'd have to go back and double check, but I believe it was fair, it was the second category. So it was, in hands-on accounting ability, it was less.
And just to follow that, which I would interpret, this is my interpretation, so, you know, just for what it's worth, I would interpret those that Bradley was extremely hands-on and that Dean Scott probably had a bigger support staff. So not that he didn't have the knowledge of it all, but acting in a controller capacity, probably didn't have to be as hands-on with journal entries, so to speak. I'd just share that for what it's worth.
I think when you supervise that many people, I think that's probably true.
Yeah, it's at a different level. Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, and I think, you know, my, my first impressions, it's interesting that he's coming from a, people didn't hear that in the audience, I think our mic wasn't on, but his very first answer, coming from an accounting family. His parents and both of his sisters, apparently, are in the accounting field as well as that sort of propelled him to jump into that area as well. He does not have years and years of experience, but he definitely has a level of interest. I think his organizational and planning skills sounded quite strong. He sounded like he would be somebody who would adhere to deadlines. I think the one thing that came through for me probably is kind of how he would work with people. He seemed to be one to maybe shy away from email and written communications unless it was necessary to put out a, you know, here's how you have to do X. But he seemed to be more one-on-one in terms of wanting to talk to the person and understand why they were having problems with their budget or something that they were turning in and try to resolve that before it escalated into something else. So he seemed to be somebody who wanted to, and he didn't really mention the word teamwork, I don't think, but he sounded like he was a team player to me in all of that. I did like the notion of him, I think it was back on the question that Joy asked about the responsibility of the town accountant in planning and managing the budget. He said he wanted to be aware of all the department budgets and he would issue a report at least monthly to all the department heads so that they would know what the status of their budget and go over it and ask what was going on. If, if things were overspent, he would spend time and find out what was happening and ask if they were having issues and maybe give them some ideas about how they could stay within budget. I thought that was a pretty, pretty solid answer, as well as talking on the hypothetical, just talking to the outside vendor and trying to figure out how they could be more consistent in terms of how they're dealing with us directly, not only us trying to solve the problem, but involving the vendor themselves. So those are points that stood out for me as I listened to him anyway. Okay.
I did like that he recalled the three days off that he took.
Yeah, right.
Very precise, he knew exactly, like, why he took them off. I, if we had asked him the dates, he probably would have remembered, I feel like. He's very detail-oriented.
He would be somebody we need to make, take his vacation, however. I think that's, that's probably true. So, okay, all right, okay. So some thoughts on Scott? And let's just do the same, same way we go here. I mean, why not?
I like that he was very upfront about work-life balance. I think that's a good sign when someone's able to just articulate that. He also seemed to be, talked about having, what's about having budgets aligned. I liked his answer a little bit better when he talked about what he would do to get up to speed, you know, online courses, research, mentors, people, contacts. I think, I think that he has a bigger understanding about the, what the curve is, actually. Like I said, he had supervised, you know, more people. He would start by getting to know everyone, teamwork, relationships. Number eight, when we asked about the different skills, he did say accounting, you know, detail oriented, number one, but didn't really say too much about the other things, I thought. Yeah, I just, I think that he, you know, has a little bit more experience and.
I think, I think both of them could do the job. With a lot of mentorship and online and connection with mass, you know, municipal accounting support. Right. I think they both could do this job. Yeah, Joy?
Yeah, I thought that he was, he was very qualified. I liked how he brought up the new accounting assist, system at his previous job that he learned from front to back and being able to make a paper system into a paperless system, I thought that was very helpful knowledge to have. I liked how he talked about cultivating trusting work relationships with the different departments. I think that's going to be very important. And, you know, just his plan on working on the current budget and getting up to speed and understanding that looking at the past is going to be just as important as looking at the current and, and how to move, making a plan to move forward. When he was talking about the, the annual budget, wasn't the annual budget? And, and I thought he answered the hypothetical pretty well, that's a very, it was a confusing hypothetical. It was like one of my law school exams. But I thought that he had a pretty, pretty good answer in regards to talking about bringing the service in-house, what do we need to fix in regards to the system and the controls for reporting, I thought that was a well thought out answer.
Okay. Francine?
Yeah, I thought he, you know, his answers gave me the idea that he was proactive. The fact that he would analyze and look into expenditures and perhaps even try to find other ways of, or other vendors that might be able to do some of the work or, you know, from which we would either buy products or services. I, I thought those were strong proactive skills of somebody who's watching the bottom line, which is important, obviously, to this town.
Okay, good job.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Scott, I think he's, he's another strong candidate. I think the, well, definitely these two. I don't necessarily see how the town could go wrong with either one of them. I think they both have, they both have pluses and minuses, but I do get the sense from Scott that he's been in the accounting department, I mean, he's spent 14 years at the same company working his way up through the accounting field, up to controller. So, I give, I give anybody a lot of credit for that, these days, staying at the same employer for that long period of time. And, yeah, so again, I think both of them are strong candidates.
Yeah. No, and I basically, you know, agree with what everybody's been saying here too. I think we do have a strong candidate here. I guess I'm, was curious in terms of the level of hands-on work that he's done. He started that way for a couple of years as an accountant by his resume and then moved on up pretty quickly into the comptroller-manager role. So, kind of in a way, you know, I'm wondering if this would be, I know he wants sort of a break from what he was saying. That's the impression I got, that he wanted to have a less stressful job from, or at least the long hours that he's been putting in. And I don't know whether this would meet his, his needs on that, his, his assumptions of what the job will entail. He did talk about, you know, doing some online learning and taking courses and so forth. So, I think that, that would obviously have to be part of the, the plan that we would work out with anybody that's hired on. He does sound like he's detail oriented, he's obviously been hardworking if he's been working as many hours a week as he said. I guess a couple of answers, I, I don't think he was as specific, I don't know that he really answered the question. I think he was kind of surface level, not really vague, but just didn't get down into what I was hoping to hear on a couple of questions. But, other than that, I think we've got two good candidates. What would be the druthers? Are we ready to think about putting forth a motion on anyone, nominating anyone of the two that you would like to offer the position to? Are we ready to do that? We want more discussion?
Well, just point of order. Is it a motion or is it a ballot where we just name our first choice? And if there's a majority, I'm not clear.
Okay, okay, I guess, I'm not sure, we've done it, we could do a ballot and who's your first choice? Is that acceptable, that, is that the proper way to do this?
It's like ranked choice voting.
Ranked choice voting?
You can do it either way. In the past, I believe it's been done with a nomination, but you can do it either way.
I see.
And I'm, I'm happy to go either way, I just want to understand the process, you'd like to use.
No, it's a valid point. I think last time, you know, we, I don't remember, but we might have had a, a little scorecard for what that was worth. But even then, I don't remember that we necessarily totaled up scores, I'm not remembering that anyway for the one we did before, so. Well, that's, why don't we do first choice? Shall we do that?
I just have a couple of questions first.
Yeah.
So, I do remember we did a, a scoring and we did add up, so, and some of all of that was helpful. But I also wanted to, I think I know the answer to this question, but I just wanted to put it out there. Both of these candidates have agreed to the salary or the, for the general range of the position, correct?
That was in the letter.
That would have been part of the letter of conditions, correct? Has been stipulated.
And both of these candidates have put forth references? Have they provided references yet?
I would have to, whoever the top choice is, I would do a background check, a reference check, and they would also have to successfully negotiate a contract.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't think there were references on their resumes themselves.
So, I'd have to garner those.
So, unless they came in through Indeed separately, okay.
And last question, other, I was just looking at both their resumes and they both have bachelor's degrees, which is great. Are there, like, certifications for accounting? I didn't see any sort of distinctions. And I'm just wondering if either one of them, I mean, they would have put on their resume, I guess, so I guess that there's, is there, is there though, an opportunity to have a distinction in terms of certified accountant or something?
Accounting certificate.
So, in the private sector where they both are, the only certification is, is a CPA. On the, on the municipal side, there would be certification through the Town Accountant City Auditor Association. But you can only earn that if you're actively in one of those seats.
And does, does it also, if you know, require a certain amount of time in the field? Or are you, or almost?
On the municipal side?
Yeah. Like so many hours, or is it just once you're in that position, you can just?
My, my, my assumption would be yes, and that's only based on the fact that a treasurer or collector has to sit through three years' worth of classes in order to take the exam.
Okay.
So, not really in the private? Okay, so, with that in mind, unless there's other discussion, could we? Yeah?
The, the only other, well, I don't know if it's worthwhile reading one of the letters into the, is, are those letters public now? The offer letters, once they signed them, did those letters become public?
Yes.
Do they cover letters?
Well, it, it might help to, to refresh everyone's mind exactly what we put in the two-page letter that they signed acknowledging everything.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
I was going to see if I could pull it up quickly in my email.
I know, I can get one in about a minute, I know right.
Okay. And then, the only other information that, that I, I would like to share unless Francine stops me, is that from the committee level, the way we interviewed them is, is the ranking that came out of the committee. And it was very close when we lined up everybody. So, we had like seven applicants.
Yeah.
We put forward four, one, two, three, and four. One and two appeared tonight.
Oh, okay, good, okay, that's good to know.
Go ahead, Francine.
No, I think one and two, because we hadn't agreed yet, but they were not my, I wouldn't say they were my first and second. One of them was. But we had two other candidates, one of whom accepted another position in the interim, and another one just, just removed herself from, from consideration because of, you know, personal concern. So, she took herself out, but I rated, I rated both of those very well myself.
Was that the two people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. All right.
But there, but there's certain, we did see a candidate tonight that I put as number one, who was still in the running here in my estimation. I don't want to give the impression that my first two remove, are, are no longer part of this process.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
All right, sort of clear.
Yeah.
All right, we'll see what we got here.
Yeah.
So, this is the letter that went out to the candidates that they had to assign and acknowledge the conditions of. "On behalf of the town of Southampton, I am pleased to inform you that you have been selected to be among the final candidates for the town accountant position. This position will report directly to the town administrator for all day-to-day matters but will remain an appointment of the select board. Because this is a municipal position appointed by the select board, your final interview will be conducted in public at a select board meeting by the members of that body. In order to schedule you for the final public interview, we must receive your agreement to participate in that format by August 26th. Once you agree, your resume and name will become a matter of public information with home address redacted. Your consent must be received by Thursday, August 26th, at 3:00 PM in order to meet the 48-hour open meeting law requirements. Interviews will occur on Tuesday, August 31st, beginning at approximately 6:00 PM. A more precise time will be provided as we get closer to the date. Start date, if you are ultimately selected for the position, the anticipated start date is September 20th, 2021. We will confirm that start date once the contingency described in this letter has been satisfied. Compensation and benefits, your compensation and benefits package will consist of the following. Bi-weekly salary up to $1,904, 30 hours per week at $31.75 per hour. Massachusetts Certified Government Accountant Training is required with certification within three years from appointment. Once obtained, an annual stipend of $1,000 is additionally available. The town also provides a comprehensive benefits program should you elect to participate for you and your eligible dependents, which begins on the first of the month following your start date of employment. You will be entitled to vacation days, personal and sick days. All time off will be administered in accordance with the town's personal policies and procedures board has set forth in their manual. This is a contract position and the final salary and benefits will be negotiated with the select board and a contract agreement will be executed. Pre-employment screening, as with all newly hired employees, this offer is contingent upon your satisfactory completion of a pre-employment background verification. If selected, we will be in touch with you to provide you additional information, instructions, if the need arises. Other conditions, as a condition of employment, you may need to execute a confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement or other necessary employment agreements. If you elect to move forward on the terms and conditions stated above, we ask that you sign this letter below and return it to me no later than Thursday, August 26th, by 3:00 PM. If you have not received a response by that date, this offer will be null and void. We are excited about the possibility of you joining our team and believe the position will offer you the challenges and responsibilities you desire. Should you have any questions regarding the above items, please feel free to contact me at your convenience."
Thanks, Ed, all right. Good, okay. So, with that, any questions about what was in the letter? Any further questions or discussion? All right, so I think, let's proceed with the notion of everybody with their first choice candidates and just go down, go down the line. Who would like to start?
I'll go first.
Okay, go for it.
Bradley.
Francine?
Bradley.
Ready?
Well, I think Scott probably edged him, even though I. Oh, I'm sorry, I think that Scott probably edged him out in terms of experience.
I agree with Maureen, I, I think that Scott has more needed experience.
All right, so we're at two and two, huh? I get to be the tiebreaker?
But can I ask, I mean, I wish I could have more conversation about it, because I know they got to talk to them more and we only had the one interview, so now I'm, I have so many more questions, I guess.
Yeah, maybe we can hear a little bit more.
Sure, I mean, yeah.
Well, and, and we're just, this is like a straw poll, right?
Yeah.
So, it, it might, before we do further, it might be good to understand where you're leaning, Chris.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you don't want to abstain.
I, I think I'm leaning toward Bradley based on my, my reaction to his, his answers. I think they both have a lot to, to learn, and yes, he's, yes, Scott does have more experience, but I think Bradley is one who can really grow in the job. So, that was my thought.
What questions do you have, Joy?
Is your, is your vote based on, I mean, you don't have to tell me specifically, but between the two candidates, do you think that, that Bradley would, would grow into the job? Is that he more of a long-term choice in the town?
Yeah, so, so this is just my opinion, right? And, and, so I'll just say that, this is my thoughts on, on the whole process. I think the two are extremely close, right, and comparables. Yes, I think Scott has a longer term in the accounting field. Bradley has four years versus Scott's 14 years. Bradley didn't mention where he worked, but on his resume, you can see where it is. That's not a stress-free corporation that he's at. In the interviews that we had, Francine alluded to this, he, he went into greater detail about why he was brought into that organization and the specific tasks he was given, which developed, which he then took on and developed this whole Excel sheet that the entire department uses now to keep their, their task on track, which now permits them to close the month on the fifth of the month, every cycle, and streamed out that office. I think Scott, to your, you pointed this out before, Joy, that, or somebody on that side did, about rolling out the new management software and going on and doing that. You know, having been someone who's done that before, that's a huge task too, so, you know, I kind of make those two equal. But all things being equal, when I look at the two, I see, in my view, that Bradley would be the best. He edges them out on fitting in to the, to the work atmosphere and the quality within the town hall. And I see him, for a reason I can't explain, but I see Bradley long-term. I, I can see him coming in, growing in this position as years go on and we strain out the finances and we expand because the town is expanding. I see Bradley as somebody who will, if given the opportunity, will grow with us and probably, you know, my wishful thinking, I, I see him retiring from the job. And again, I, I can't explain it, that's just my view.
My concern, and, and again, they, they are both qualified for the position. My concern about Scott is that he's had a higher level position, he's had a number of subordinates, therefore, he's done, he's moved away from a lot of the detail work and the groundwork that really has to be done. We don't have a tremendous depth of staff here. So, the person has to come in who's going to, you know, be the head of the department, but also be the worker. And I, I can see that more in Bradley than I, than I do in Scott.
I'd like to ask a question, if I can ask, Ed. You know, you were mayor, you know, you came in and then you went from, you know, being at a different level and then having two positions that involved town administrator in small towns. And so, you did have to jump into, you know, a number of things at a day-to-day level. And I'm just wondering if, I mean, this person is going to report to you, and I'm just wondering, are you, would you be comfortable with either one of these candidates?
I'd be comfortable with either one, if you're asking me if I have. If you're asking me if I have an opinion or a recommendation, I would give the edge to Bradley. And I'll tell you why. In my assessment, from, not only assessment through it indeed, but from what I've seen from his answers, from some of the specificness, I believe Bradley is an absolutely brilliant individual, number one. Number two, I've carried something with me for a while that I kind of learned in the business trade. And when I made the move, after I got my master's in finance, from a small hardware enterprise to walking into, you know, Etna with a building with 5,000 individuals, the individual that hired me, and he asked me to return the favor someday, was that he saw in me a desire when he interviewed me for that position and to do well. I actually did that a couple of times when I was mayor too, and it worked out. It's hard to pick the time when that's right, when you've got experience or you've got somebody that maybe doesn't have the same amount of experience. But if you see the spark, and I saw it in Bradley. I think he's got a huge desire. They both have got the learning curve in learning municipal laws, rules and regulations. So I'll put them on an even keel. Yes, Scott has some more business experience. But I really believe if you give Bradley the opportunity, he's going to excel in this position.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do agree with you. I think that he definitely had the desire, and I do think he's incredibly smart.
Okay. With all that said, do we want to do a final review? Are we okay with everybody still sticking with their choices? We had three Bradleys and two Scots?
Well, I think, given what I've heard, I mean, I'd like to sort of go along and have sort of, you know, close to a unanimous decision on this, and I'm happy with supporting Bradley as well.
Okay. Do you have any final thoughts? You don't have to change?
No, no, no. I mean, no, I do want to unify, you know, vote on this because I think it is important, and I don't want someone to join the municipal team and just think that we're not behind them 100%. I think that's also really important. It sounds like Bradley has a steeper cliff to climb, but that he might just do it faster, that he just is so driven and that, you know, the fact that you even referenced him as being brilliant, like, that's a huge compliment in my eyes. And I, yeah, I would like to vote for Bradley. I think that if he's going to be here long-term, if it's projected, and we really think that he's going to be devoted to this town like we are, I think that that's the best choice then for Southampton.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks. And I think, hearing everybody's comments, I think we have come to a general consensus to offer the position to Bradley Ocksin. Oxkin? Sorry. Ox... Oxin?
Oxin.
Oxin. It's O-K-S-C-I-N. That's a... Got to get my vowels and my consonants in the right place. Bradley Oxin. Okay. So I think that would be the charge, Ed. We would...
So I'll make that a motion. And it'd be subject to the terms and conditions already outlined in the letter.
Right, and the references.
And the, you know, subject to reference checks.
Yeah, exactly.
Background reference checks, and also it is a contract position. So you would have to negotiate a successful contract with the Select Board.
All right. So I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So be it. Thank you. All right. Very good. So let us continue with the rest of our Select Board reports. John, why don't you go ahead, and then I'll go to Francine.
Yes. So since my last report, neither Capitol or Greenway have met, and I know I'm sharing Greenway with Chris. Finance did meet, but I was unable to attend the finance meeting because I was attending the Hampshire Regional School Committee meeting. It was a lively meeting, as always, that ran four hours and 15 minutes in length, in person. But I think the biggest thing that came out of that that I would share, because a lot of it, while it's all very important, but I think the high levels here, is the vaccination rates within the school. So I think everyone is familiar now, which happened the day after this meeting, where the Commissioner of Education has been granted certain emergency powers from the DESI Board, in that at the middle school and high school level, all children are eligible for the vaccine based on their age. So within our student population up there, we currently, as of Monday, are at 59.57%. Our staff within the building is at 94.03, which gives us a blend of 65.17. And Stephanie Foss will be coordinating a vaccine clinic at Hampshire Regional and in hopes to get the school up over that 80% threshold before October 1st. And there will also be a public meeting on September 9th at 5:00 p.m. via Zoom that I know just from talking, that our local Board of Health will be listening, where Stephanie Foss and the Superintendent are going to explain the no-cost option of testing on the spot for all five schools within the district, and what that process is going to be, and parents would need to opt-in. So it's the first step in the education process to hopefully build the vaccine rates. And if successful, in theory, that will have, since Southampton makes up 56% of that school, the more vaccines we can get there will improve the vaccine rates within our town itself. So. And then PPP, B-Board did meet. We went over some items that are going to come up later on the agenda, just procedural-wise. And we agreed that by the next meeting, we would each individually review the first 50 pages of the proposed changes to the Procedures, Policies, Bylaws book. But that'll put us halfway through. So I'm envisioning this to be a three-to-four-month process. And that's it.
Can I ask a question in regards to the school committee meeting? Why the 80% threshold? What is it about the 80% number?
The guidance that came from the Commissioner was that at the middle school and higher, masks will stay in place until you can cross the threshold of 80% vaccination. Once you cross that, only the unvaccinated would be required to wear a mask.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And also, no-cost testing within the school during school, or...
That's going to be part of what we're going to find out. Whether, hey, my child was potentially exposed on Saturday, can they get tested on Monday at the school? So there'll be three levels of testing. One would be if there's an exposure, you get tested. Then there would be random testing, and then the last would be the pool testing. And parents have to consent to all three to start with. So that in the event, they're anticipating that if there's an escalation, an outbreak, then they're going to ramp up the level of testing to try to identify it sooner rather than later within the schools. And the Governor has committed to pay 100% of the funds required to it, which includes additional staff if needed.
As in additional nurses or additional...
It could be, or certified testers.
Okay.
And that'll all come out on September 9th at 5:00 o'clock. And it's going to be a Zoom meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Could I ask you a question on the PQB? You're reading the personnel, the document there. What is the process, and do employees have any input?
So my understanding on this is, when my first meeting I attended, there was a three-page laundry list of changes. So I asked that the clerk take that back and redline the existing documents so that, at least for my benefit, I could see exactly where the changes are. In my understanding, all those changes have come over the past three or four years, where people just recommended these changes should be made. And so the first step is to redline the document, which created the 100-page document, when you do the track changes in it. And now we're going to meet it as a group to go through. Some of them make perfect sense: eliminate select men and insert Select Board. But there are other suggestions in there that remove what I feel are possibly some checks and balances that need to stay. So we need, as a group, need to have that conversation. Ultimately, it's the majority of the committee's opinion right now that, once that's done, they would hold a public hearing for input. And at the conclusion of that, the document would be forwarded to the Select Board for approval.
So the Select Board has the final approval of that document?
Yes.
There's an awful lot of information, that some of it's contractual. I mean, I guess we'll just have to wait to see. But that's a big responsibility, and that's a lot of decision-making without employee input.
Correct. Yeah, and I don't disagree with you. And I'm only one of the five voices there, but it may be that maybe we need to break this up in chunks. Like, the grammar or the changes in titles, that's an easy one that everybody will agree on. But the more complex and potential increases in the number of sick days allowed, you know, there has to be deeper conversations on those.
A different level of discussion.
At what point were, you know, employees were hired under certain understandings, and at what point is it okay to just change those?
I haven't seen... I haven't done a full review, but I didn't see any change in there that took away a benefit. There are enhancements.
Okay. Well, one thing that we've talked about repeatedly, you know, is the ability to not have prorated, you know, time after July 1, people leave, they take, you know, we've talked about that is not in the best interest of the town, but that's certainly something that somebody might have taken employment with that understanding. So I guess where is the middle brown there? So I guess we'll just wait to see what happens. When was the last time this was actually updated?
I think it was 2016.
Yeah.
Not that long ago.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think we'd have to see whether certain things would be recommended to be grandfathered in, for example, or, you know, what things would take effect going forward from, you know, X date. I would assume there has to be a...
And I think the committee's already done the first step as far as, okay, you've got a laundry list. Put all the changes in the document so we can actually, everyone can see clear as day what you're trying to do, or what the suggestion is. And then take it page by page and...
Okay. Sounds like a tedious task.
I think there should be employee input.
Yeah, to the extent there can be. But again, I guess if they get to that employee or the public hearing, is that would include people that are the employees of the town would be invited to that, right?
For the residents.
Yeah, but town employees, yeah, that are involved in that, that affects them. They should be invited to it at some point in time to give their input, I would assume. But, okay. Well, keep us posted on how that goes. All right. Anything else, John?
No.
All right. Francine?
Okay, thank you. The Norris School met on, the school committee met on August 11th. And the purpose of the meeting was to consider a mask-wearing policy for Norris students that was developed by the Hampshire Regional Superintendent based on CDC and state guidelines. At that meeting, the vote was four to one in favor of mask-wearing for students until, I believe, it's October 1st, and it'll be looked and examined again at that point, depending upon the status of COVID in our town and in the county as well. All right. The next meeting I attended was the Zoning Board of Appeals. They met on August 16th to consider a variance for construction of a garage on Palmoy Meadow Road. Due to insufficient information, no decision was reached, and the board scheduled to continue its deliberations on Thursday, September 9th at 5:30. I also participated in the PBPC Regional HR Human Resources Feasibility Study. The group met via Zoom on August 23rd. The participating towns in this study include Chester, West Hampton and Southampton. And it's projected that we will be joined by Blandford, Chesterfield and Goshen, as well as Gateway Regional School District as potential additional partners in this process. The attendees representing West Hampton, Chester and Southampton briefly discussed what their HR needs were at this time. And they include such things as updated and compliant policies, systems and structure, annual performance reviews, morale issues, grievance procedures, onboarding and exiting training and protocols, and I'm sure the list will continue to go on. PBPC, since they don't have HR expertise in residence on the PBPC, they are going to issue a targeted request for proposal to hire an HR professional with municipal experience to conduct assessments of town needs in order to identify the resources needed by small towns. And it looks like the likely source of that expertise will be the Employers Association of New England. And then finally, I'm recommending that John Lumbrer, a Select Board liaison, to the PQB and the Chair of the PQB join the group and participate in the discussion and the upcoming needs assessment. And then that next meeting of this HR feasibility group will be September 8th at 8:30 in the morning, and that's via Zoom. Okay. The next and final one is the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to talk about the fact that the committee has posted and is requesting comments on drafts of bylaws that are important to town residents. Those bylaws are soliciting and canvassing is one, nuisance and peace and quiet is another, and building numbering. Those draft bylaws are posted on the town website. The goal by posting them is to provide the people with advanced and sufficient access to the draft documents in order to gather comments before finalizing the text. The drafts can be found on the homepage of the town website, which can be accessed by going to www.townofsouthampton.org and following the instructions. Your comments are important to ensuring that the residents are given the opportunity to provide feedback. After reviewing the drafts, please email your comments to bylawreview@townofsouthampton.org by September 15th. We extended the date. The original date was September 10th. You have to use that mechanism to communicate your comments, not Facebook. The only official way is by utilizing the email provided by the town to gather this information. In order to provide another means in addition to the email comments and to elicit other input, the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee has scheduled a public meeting on September 21st at 6:30 p.m. right here in the first-floor conference room. At that meeting, additional comments will be gathered, and a summary of all comments received through the email process will be made public. We hope that many of you will take advantage of one or both methods of bringing your thoughts to the committee's attention. The next step in this process requires that the town vote on the final version at a special or annual town meeting before submitting them to the Attorney General for final approval. Upcoming meetings of the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee are scheduled for September 8th and September 15th at 10:30 in the morning here in the first-floor conference room. And again, the public meeting is held on September 21st at 6:30 p.m. And I do want to thank Tammy for posting this announcement on the community Facebook page and Robert Floyd for putting it into the town newsletter. It's important we get as much input as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Francine. And I think, just to add, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the nuisance, peace and quiet is pretty much a new bylaw, correct?
Yes.
And the soliciting one and the numbering of buildings has been expanded. What we have as a current bylaw is really very minimal. It's about three or four sentences. It's not very lengthy. And so this is a different expanded version of it, working in conjunction with the Police Department, Building Commissioner, et cetera, on the various paragraphs that are in there. So try to take advantage of it one way or another, either by email comment or coming to the meeting. And that will be a first step. And then obviously, the committee would have to bring that back before the Select Board to review before moving forward. board to review before moving forward to thinking about it on the town warrant for a town meeting. Okay? Anything else?
And the attorney, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have you thought about having police, the people that have primarily involved, like having police, fire and Board of Health or Health Department, Health Director representation?
Yeah, it would, it would be the police, the fire and the building superintendent are the ones who had the most input into, into this process.
To be at the meeting, in the public meeting?
Yes, the public hearing, yes.
Yeah, that would be good. Yep, okay. For me, very, very few things. As John mentioned, the Greenway Committee has got a meeting started, I believe it's scheduled for September 7th now at Connet Park at 6:30. Their Grant Committee is meeting September 8th via Zoom at 2:30. And the Tech Committee is meeting tomorrow night at, at 6 o'clock via Zoom. The Tech Committee in particular is going to be looking at issues related to the Community Compact IT Grant, which is right before us in terms of a deadline. There's a deadline, the, the application is open now, or will be open soon, actually. It's not actually open yet. But from September 15th to October 15th is when we would have to put in a, a grant application for that. And they're looking at a couple of different things, from cybersecurity to potentially revision of software, payroll, kinds of things. It's got to be one project. It can't be multiple projects, so it's got to be one project. So they're going to be talking about which ones seem to make the most sense, where we think we can put an argument out there for impact, why it's important, why it would be more efficient, cost-effective, et cetera. So they'll be working on that, hopefully with the Grant Committee over the next month to get that one put into place. We have had a request, and I think I've passed it on to the school principal at Norris already, for the Safe Roots to School. This is the Signs and Lines program. It was a pretty minimal one. I think I had mentioned about just doing different pavement markings if that were needed for parking and things like that, but also doing the, the various things from bicycle rodeos to you name it, the, the Walk to School Day, all of those kinds of activities and events. So they will probably be reaching out again to, to Liza because the deadline, I believe, for that is September 17th. So they might be reaching out to the school to see if we're interested in doing more on the Safe Roots to Schools program. Okay? I think that's it for the Grants Committee at this point in time as well. Yeah, okay. Any questions from anybody?
I just have a question. One of the things we've been talking about is the broadband and internet feasibility. Just wonder if you could, if you were planning on bringing that up, or if that's in the agenda for tomorrow?
Yeah, the, the AdHoc Tech Committee has talked about it. I think what we wanted to do is, based on getting this, the, the information from our charter rep in terms of where our low broadband locations are around town, to put that out to the Tech Committee and see what they think in terms of, you know, how, how worthwhile do they think it would be to try and do something to, to try and address that? I mean, what, what kind of things could be done from their limited perspective to see about improving that broadband access around town and whether that would be appropriate for one of the grant applications that they're, you know, looking at? Or whether or not that's got to be something bigger through the whole ARPA fund, I think. Is there, I don't know, anything else on that? I mean...
Our government rep from Charter has acknowledged the receipt of my request and has put in the order for the map for where they currently do offer service in Southampton, which will show us the areas that they don't. And as soon as he's got that, he's going to send it along to me. So I will send it along to you and to the AdHoc Tech Committee.
Yeah, okay, so we won't have it, obviously, for the Tech Committee tomorrow night, but we should at least have it, hopefully, by our, our next select board meeting with a little bit of luck, so we can at least get a sense of what that is too.
Chris?
Yeah, we would like to certainly focus on some of that, yeah.
So I, I'm a little confused. So I, finding out where Charter is available within the community, I'm assuming is going to be high because, I don't know if anyone's had the chance to dive into the census data that came out, but according to the Southampton Census of 2020, 98.5% of all the homes in Southampton already have internet. How the census picked up on that data, I don't know. So I would expect the entire town to be covered. I, I thought the purpose of, and maybe it's just a miswording, but I thought the purpose was to find out where, like, the weak internet connections are, because they may have service, but it's getting, I don't know.
Yeah, you could be correct in terms of my, my wording on it. Yes, I think there are definitely households where you think, I mean, even at my place, where I, I can go, you know, a few feet away from my house and I, you know, I lose my connection. So, I mean, it's, you know, I think the, the level of connection is probably, the level of connectivity is probably what we're talking about.
Even in this building?
Yeah, well, here too, yes. So, yeah, so I guess it's not just, okay, is it at the end of some, some road that doesn't have it, but, you know, what, where are the weak points in, in the level of service that's being able to be received, I guess? Is that fair?
Well, it'd be tough to do, because that could be your, your particular equipment rather than the network, so.
Whether they would answer the question, I don't know, Ed, but the question might be is, by pole location, can you tell us the number of complaints that have been received for poor quality? So say the pole out on Cross Route 95, Glendale, that connects all those houses, had 137 complaints during the past year when everybody was Zooming. I would suspect there's a low-quality issue out there versus, I don't know. I, and, and I don't know if there's, and I'm sure they're not necessarily going to divulge that information if they even had it at their fingertips.
Okay, no, those are good points. I mean, just to understand exactly what we're looking for. So we'll have a further discussion probably on that with the, with the Charter people and also with the Tech people to see what we need to be asking for the right information.
I think that we just need to understand exactly what's going on. And I think the American Rescue Funds are very focused on infrastructure. And I think it's an equity issue also. And I know that when there was a resident that mentioned about, he's a professional and he does a lot of work from home and he doesn't have very good service, I was tremendously impressed with Dan LaBelle's response. I mean, he basically went, you know, try this, then do this, and then do this, and then do this. And so I think there's lots of levels of this, and I think that we just want to make sure that we can do, I just think the Tech Committee is a great resource and if we can understand the problem, if there is one, it'll help, then we can figure out how to, provide good service throughout town.
Yep, okay, good, all right. Okay, I think that's it for reports. Moving on, quarterly reports, we don't have any tonight, but just to remind everybody, you do have a schedule that's been posted. I believe everybody's received an email. The Chairs of the various committees, the department heads would have received an email with these schedules for the reports, as well as the content outline, suggested content outline. The first meeting in September, September 14th. We have asked to have reports from the Assessor, the Accountant, the Treasure Collector and the Finance Committee. Given that we don't have an Assessor in place, I would say I would extend that invitation to somebody from the Board of Assessors to represent that department. And for September 28th, that would actually be Community Preservation, Conservation Commission, Open Space and Parks, I believe, are the, the ones. Okay, so those are the, the groups that are the first reportees. And again, it's something that we're trying to re, restart. We had had a plan to do it and we started it a little bit, but never really kept up with it. We're going to try our best to keep up with the schedule that's been posted. And there are some suggested contents for the report so that you can sort of outline yourself and, and focus yourself in terms of what we would like to hear, and obviously anything beyond that. But take, take a stab at it and we'll try to do our best to schedule that early on in the meeting as well, so that we don't have you sitting here until two hours later. We'll try to put that somewhere toward the beginning. Okay?
Can I ask a point of order? I don't think we did this, does it have to be...
We're going to come to it because it's down later on under the PCFs as well.
Okay.
Yes, yes, there was a resignation. We'll catch it on the, on the other end. It's on here twice, I believe, so we'll come up to that. Yep, thank you. Old business. So how about where we are with the Assistant Accountant position? I think you started mentioning something, Ed, if you want to just reiterate that?
Sure. The, the Subcommittee that did the preliminary interviews had identified two, two candidates that they would like to pursue, and the Select Board at the last meeting has given, delegated the authority to me to follow up on that. I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow afternoon with one of those two candidates and we'll, we'll follow up with them, see if they're still, definitely, it sounds like she's still definitely interested in the position. I will garner the reference information and follow up on the references. And if they check out, we will move forward and make an offer and hire that individual for the Assistant Accountant position.
And that would be something that would go through PQB as well?
Yes, we would, we would fill out a PCF for that, that and submit it to the PPB and then it would come back to the Select Board.
Okay. And the next PQB meeting, John, did you tell us, was that? Has it been scheduled or maybe not?
My memory says it's September 16th, that that's a Thursday.
Okay, so, yeah, you're right. Okay, September 16th, right? Okay, so we're kind of in the neighborhood, so we probably wouldn't have it for the next meeting, but for the 20th or 28th? Or if we, well, we could determine. If we wanted to get somebody on board early, maybe we could...
Do an emergency.
I would suggest submitting two, an emergency and a regular.
Yeah, I was going to say, just so that we don't waste another 10 days with nobody in the position.
And possibly lose the candidate.
Right, yeah, so we definitely don't want to lose the candidate if they accept it. Okay, well, we'll get to that point when we find out what's going on. Good, all right. How about anything in terms of the audit, audit update?
Yes, after, after the auditing firm came in and did their field work here, they have had some follow-up questions for us, both seeking additional documents and for follow-up on some, some of the variances that they have found. So we are responding to those questions. And usually, depending on what they're asking, usually we've responded either the same day or the day after. There's some, there's a couple that have come up on the Enterprise Fund that I'll have to get together with Tom gone on and respond to them.
Okay. Are we still hoping that we can have a draft report for the 14th or...
I'm hoping that, but we shall see.
All right, and everyone should have gotten a copy of the, the Fiscal 18 and Fiscal 19 reports for your reading information, okay?
Thank you.
That can give you some background anyway, and we'll be probably exploring those further as we get the...
You might find the rhetorical question in those documents.
Good bit, good bit. All right, good. All right, where are we with the Route 10 Bridge Water Main update?
From my understanding, they did the, the tie-in to Former Road, at Former Road last week, and they did a little bit with it again yesterday. So they should be at the point where everything is completed, except for coming back later in the fall and doing the secondary or finish coat of the asphalt.
Have all the iron sheets been pulled up or are they still...
They were still there the other day, so.
They're up.
Did they pick them up today or yesterday? Good.
Good, that had been a bit of a complaint by a few people I've seen.
Yeah, there were a few, few that were remaining, right down by the dam, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, good, so that sounds like that's moving along pretty well. Okay, how about East Street Bridge?
East Street Bridge is moving along. We had the preliminary meeting for CONCAM out there about a week ago. And the, the general contractor is finalizing their agreement with one, one of two environmental consultants because of the fact of the...
Endangered species?
Submittal for the, yeah, endangered species of the turtles and the, the mussels. So that is moving, moving along. I still expect that oil, gas and electric will probably be the first sight, sign of work out there when they do the horizontal boring under the, the river to take the gas vein off the bridge and actually move it under the river.
Okay. Any questions about that from anyone? All right. Moving on to new business, any update on COVID-19 issues here in town?
Town seems to be fairly stable. The, the state and the county-wise, the numbers are still creeping up slightly. Probably Camden County, where I live, is, has some stronger issues only because it has the city of Springfield in it and their vaccination rates are, are low. It was, it was interesting seeing an article a couple of days ago on the amount of hospitalizations, which have basically, for Bay State, which has four locations, has doubled in the last couple of weeks. So, and now, you know, with schools going back in, with students coming back to college that have traveled and, you know, the end of summer where people have taken vacations, you know, are, are coming back. Yeah, I think we're all kind of taking an anxious look at, okay, will this have peaked again, or is it still going to keep climbing to, you know, some extent?
Just a comment, I read recently where they assessed all the counties in Massachusetts and the only one that's not at high risk is Franklin County. And that's a change for Hampshire because I believe it was Hampshire and Franklin County a couple of weeks ago. So just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
Sliding in there, okay. We'll keep an eye out on that and hopefully we can keep a, keep a stable, stable situation without any real spikes. That would be good. Okay, CARES Act update.
And Chris and I have been working on this. We still have a few reports we want to go through to make the number more finite. It would appear that with not only some of the items that we haven't utilized yet, but the change in the FEMA to 100% reimbursement, which takes away some of the items that previously would have been at least 25% CARES eligible are now 0% eligible through CARES, that we will have approximately $130,000 or $140,000 to reprogram. So I'm, I'm working with our rep at the, down in Boston to find out, okay, with those changes to the FEMA updates, what, what is actually left that is 100% reimbursable so we can concentrate our efforts into those areas for anything we need, need or want to reprogram between now or, or ask for new between now and the end of December.
No, we've got to get that finalized certainly before the middle of September and get, get a clue on that, because if we do have to order things and we get the backlog like last year where things were not available, then, you know, we definitely don't want to be purchasing things at the last minute like last time, so we want to be ahead of it. And I think we, we had a huge, couple of invoices come in that had, had not been previously billed, and so that knocked down our, our ongoing, where are you, why haven't you used the money, kind of thing, and that, that helped a lot. So I, I think we're right around that $140,000 mark to reprogram.
Can I ask a question with that? So that has to be used or received by the end of December?
Correct.
That was actually an either-or question. It has to be ordered or received or both?
I'll go back and take, take a look at it, but I would think that it has to be ordered and received by the end of December, yes.
And last time, I think there was money built into it to help people with rent and also to help people with food. I'm pretty sure that most of the food was provided either with a couple or to gift cards for the Good Each to Go, I think.
Yes.
What about, has people accessed the rental assistance?
No, they have not as of yet.
We need to get the word out about that.
I know, through the housing folks, I mean, there, there is $6,000 that we had put aside for the CARES, from the CARES Act to help people that are behind on their, their rent or their mortgage. And I gather that there are other programs that are helping people out such that we have not had much of a demand here, but there, that is still an eligible item, I believe, to be, to be accessed. be accessed. So to the extent that, you know, we had seen them drawing down on the $6,000, I mean, my inclination would have been to increase the amount, but so far we are not seeing it. And I know it's posted on our website, I don't know what else the Housing Authority has done to publicize that, honestly.
I don't think much, but we can get on the.
Oh, yeah, I mean, take the laundry room at the rental apartments in town, like, I think we really need to get the word out.
And it's for rent and mortgage assistance?
And that's a category that actually carries forward into, you know, ARPA, so, you know, so far what we've seen for activity in CARE is a kind of, you know, would be an inkling that, okay, maybe that's probably not a category, you know, we'll think about with ARPA, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, but I think, you know, to the extent you'd mentioned the flyers that are there for the community meeting for the HPP, like, maybe something like that could be talked about at the next Housing Authority meeting to just get the word out more.
Absolutely.
Because I, I mean, it's not something Southampton is usually done, so I think people would not look to Southampton first and foremost to say, hey, look, I'm behind on my rent, can I get some help? But we've tried to put the word out, I think through the school and various others, to let people know, if you know of people that are struggling, please reach out and contact somebody, let us know so that that could be perhaps something provided. There may be some more additional food assistance, I'm not sure through, I know the COA was still gonna be doing a couple of things with their, possibly with their grab-and-go lunch type things or something, or the cupboard maybe. So there's a couple of things that might still take up some, but that won't eat up a lot of money. That's a few thousand dollars at most, so.
Is it an application or written request? How does one access this?
You have to take a look on the website.
On the website?
Yeah, it's a whole program that the Housing Authority.
With directions on there?
Yeah, they aligned with, oh, gosh, I'm gonna say Community Action?
Okay.
PAC.
I'll look that up.
No, 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 it was a group out of East Hampton, am I not right on that?
Either out of East Hampton or Northampton.
Yeah, one or the other.
I guess Northampton.
Blanking the name right now, but it's on our website, so it's there on homepage. So just, you know, maybe whenever there is another housing meeting, just bring that up and see if we can maybe think of ways to get more publicity about that. I don't know, just seems like there ought to be some people that might need that, so.
I agree.
I'm a little surprised that it hasn't even had any takers, yeah.
Can I ask one more question about the CARES Act? I saw on the warrant, are we still paying for case tracing?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I thought it only went to the end of the fiscal year, was that renewed?
It's one of the items that we'll have to transfer monies for, it's still eligible. But the original amount that was programmed for it, I believe, and would have run out at the end of June or July.
Right, so now it's still getting payment, I mean, we're still paying for it, and it's coming out of funds that haven't been allocated from CARES? How's that working, and is the Board of Health getting reports? I don't know that we're doing as much case tracing as the past.
The couple of meetings I've been to, there's not been a report in terms of numbers and activity, but I thought, my understanding was that the position was to continue, was funded through December 31st.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Not the contract, did we say?
No, the original one was June 30th.
Yeah, there's two different pieces.
Originally it was June, and then I thought extended.
Yeah, the contract that's in place, and then I will go back and double-check on the amount, but I thought it was enough, I thought it was only enough for a year, I could be wrong, it could have been 18 months.
I think it was a year, and so I think if anything, they probably have to renew that contract, if that's what they're doing, if they're continuing with contract tracing, contact tracing, because I do think it went through June.
The contract did, yeah.
Right, so to the extent that they still want to do that, it's still a CARES Act eligible activity. But, yeah, they need to be sure that they're following their own procedures and have a contract in place, so amending that or extending.
So if they didn't do that already, that should, they should renew that contract instead of just having it be an automatic.
Right.
Chris?
Yes?
If I could, you know, I know Francine's the liaison, but school starts tomorrow, and I know all our plans have been prefaced on the fact that we've been assured by the Board of Health that contact tracing will stay in place until the end of this year, and that's what our RNs are counting on, so.
No, I'm sure, it's just a matter of doing the paperwork and getting it correct, because they started the contact tracing last year without a contract in place, and then there were payments made before a contract took place, and so they had to go back and amend the contract to make it retroactive to.
So it's more of a question to make sure all the paperwork's in order.
Just to get the paperwork, if they're gonna, it's still an eligible CARES thing, and it's certainly if it's been agreed on by the school, and it's, you know, I'm not disputing any of that. It's more for the Board of Health to get their paperwork in place so that they, if it has expired, which I think it has.
I do too.
They need to do the proper thing to amend it, extend it, whatever, so.
And get reports.
Yeah, yeah, and I have no idea.
We're funding, you know, we're sending money.
What level of reporting they get on the contact tracing, I really don't know. So, I know we don't ever ask for names or any of that kind of thing, but just to get an idea of how many incidents somebody has had to trace and whether they've originated in town or they've been secondary to town because it was somebody else, you know, anyway. Okay, next, American Rescue Act, we're still waiting for magical guidance, these people are just ridiculous.
It's supposed to be due about any time. I mean, so far the categories we know that are eligible are the infrastructure of water sewer, broadband. We know that we can use it for any required trainings that the police department has to do due to the Police Reform Act. It is eligible for food, for rent, or mortgage help.
So I think what we had talked about doing was having a meeting after the holidays, getting a meeting with at least the two or three sector people, like the sewer water folks, getting, you know, getting them, and maybe one or two people from the tech committee, getting together and just having a brainstorming meeting to start with what we know is possible in terms of the categories under ARPA, just to get those initial ideas flowing to us, and then, once we get the broader information, then that could be a broader discussion, but at least to get something started. I assume that the water commissioners have a list of things that they would like to get done, and we could, you know, start talking about whether any of those would be eligible, et cetera. So I think, you know, once we, maybe on a week in between, in between select board meetings, maybe, we could find a time to at least start that brainstorming meeting, you know, maybe probably during the day, probably easier for them during their workday, I don't know, than an evening meeting, but we can, we'll figure that out. But we need to start making some headway on that, we've been given some funds and we need to just, you know, we're just not getting any detail as to how these things have to be spent at this point in time, in terms of any, you know, level of detail that we need.
But everything I've heard, other than the, like, infrastructure, I just feel like we should go back to what were set up as goals back when, you know, like Master Plan, and also what the Select Board has earmarked as goals, because I think this is the significant amount of money. We've gotten two payments now, and I just feel like we should have a broader discussion, you know, like, food's great, rent's great, mortgage is great, but we still have $130,000, $140,000 that can be used towards that. So I just think that we should really have a broader discussion about trying to make a good dent on some of the things that the townspeople or the Select Board have said should be priorities.
Okay. Good idea. Okay. All right. Next, we're up to the collaborations and cost efficiencies alternative discussions.
Do we not have revenue and expenditures?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss one? I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I marked it, sorry. Ed, update on revenue and expenditures, I don't believe there's anything in our package, right?
No, the last expenditure report would be up to date, and then for revenues, the last one that was sent out was up to date, we are, we do have to set up some revenue accounts for, there's one packet that has not been posted to the revenue report, which needs those, so that is one of the priorities that I have set for Regina before she leaves to make sure that those revenue accounts are set up so we can finish off the 21 revenues.
Okay, and that would include the end-of-year transfers and everything, so, okay.
Right, I mean, what I told her were, at least my priorities were to create those revenue accounts so we can finish off the 21 revenues, to do the departmental transfers for fiscal '21, to do the encumbrances for fiscal year '22, and to finish entering the fiscal year '22 budget.
So with all that going on, could we possibly just say now that we know we're gonna take a pass on this subject on the 14th, but set an expectation on the 28th?
Yeah.
That we.
Yeah, I mean, what's.
Have that report, because, I mean, if she's gotta get those accounts up by the 9th, then that, you know, no pressure to get it done by the 14th, but if by the 28th.
Well, I would expect that they would be ready for the 14th.
And I'd be perfectly happy if they were, but we really need to see the June 30th.
Yeah, now, let's aim for the 14th, and this has been kind of dragging on, and if we can make this happen as part of her last time here and working with Ed, I think we need to get a handle on where we end up at the end of the fiscal year so that we know what's going on, especially on the revenue side. I know Concom and others are waiting to see where their accounts are, they're trying to balance their own accounts, and, you know, wanting to be clear with their own fiscal year accounts. So I think let's put that as getting us a report that is complete for September 14th.
Is there an opportunity or funding to increase her hours in the next two weeks instead of 24 to provide additional hours?
She already offered to work later into the evening, and I've already said, yes, go ahead.
Okay, good, that'd be good, okay. Okay, thanks. Jumping back onto the Collaboration and Cost efficiencies Alternatives Committee, I don't know if we had any further thoughts about this, this was just, again, the first iteration of a purpose statement and membership and meeting frequency. I would like us to be able to move forward on it, we don't have to make a final decision tonight, but I would like us to at least start thinking about when we would like this to start. September is here, and we seem to have a very busy September, so my own thought would be October, that we would start having a monthly meeting, but what that's going to entail is that, just to reiterate what we had put here, we had, I think, I think we ended up with 12 members finally, I had miscounted or something in the early ones, so we had two of whom maybe from the Select Board, three town employees, one from the Finance Committee, one from Norris HS School Committee, one from the Planning Board, the Town Administrator, and three town residents with career experience, relevant career experience in financial management or human resources appointed by the Select Board. And then, the idea with the town employees was that they were grouped into clusters, and there would be one person from each of those clusters selected, self-selected by that group, and coming to a meeting representing the needs, wants, desires, opinions of others in their little subset cluster. So I guess my question is how to make that happen? Are we comfortable moving forward with this? Do we still want to tweak this some more? Because otherwise, what we could do would be to put out some deadlines, again, for these mini clusters to at least have a meeting amongst themselves and figure out who's gonna be their designee to the bigger meeting, so we could get started. And I would also say that Select Board would have to reach out and try to reach out with and come to, come to a meeting with at least a couple of suggestions of town residents that would be important people probably to invite to this kind of a committee. So I don't know where we are, are we ready to start with this? Is it too early? Thoughts, Reading?
I don't think it's too early at all, and I think getting people at least thinking about nominating someone there from their department or committee is good. I think it might be a little narrow in the public one.
Okay.
I mean, let me just give an example, Mike Rosenberg, Matt Ruhl, and Mary Serok from Finance, like, those people at all, they don't necessarily have a job, or, I think it says career experience, so I'm not saying that I'm nominating them or anything, but this is just an example, I think it would just, you know, relevant.
Take out the word career, maybe.
Yeah, maybe just relevant experience or something.
Relevant experience, yeah, okay.
Just so that, and I also think there have been problems in the past when we just reached out and only offered to certain people, I think we have to cast a wide net and say, a new committee is starting, and this is what the charge is, is there anybody that's interested? I think in the past, there were problems when people volunteered and then were never contacted, or they came in and there was not a really good process for selecting them, so I just think we should be careful about the process.
I think it's very important to say that the role people are gonna play would be to identify cost-effective efficiencies and alternate means of doing something as opposed to coming in with a list of needs and wants. I mean, this is really about finding different ways to do things so that we can, you know, kind of get some relief from some of the financial burden just by finding ways of saving money. So that has to be the commitment, not, again, not this is what I need kind of discussion.
So repeat that beginning part again, so people come into the meeting with the mindset of getting involved in problem solving?
Yes, and identifying alternatives to achieve cost efficiencies and financial stability. It's a very important function.
Okay.
And I would add, and there, only because it's silent, so I'd rather it not be left up to interpretation, but is your expectation of this, is these would all be public meetings? Publicly posted, so any, or is it gonna be in secret in some room somewhere? It just doesn't say it.
Oh, okay, no, I would certainly expect these to be public meetings, yeah.
Right, so we post them 48 hours in advance, open to the public, and then the committee can make its own rules about participation, but I think the more transparent.
In terms of anybody else, right, exactly.
The more transparent we can be.
Yep, no, absolutely, that is part of the goal here. So the idea would be to have public meetings, yes, and then meet once a month, you know, if we could agree on whatever time of day, let alone day, would be the next challenge probably, but, so, back to your point, Reading, would it be an idea that people could, Select Board could reach out and everybody come back with no more than two maybe, or, I don't know, I mean, reach out to people to see if they're interested, first of all?
Well, I think maybe having a one-page sort of.
Write-up?
Write-up, and then provide it to the committees or departments that, you know, and how to, you know, like, propose, how to send it out to the public at large, I guess.
Okay.
But I think if we're saying, one representative from these departments, one representative from this, one representative from Finance, then we send it to the chairs of those committees, we send it to those department heads, and say, by X date, can you please put forth names?
Okay.
And I think for the town piece, for the three residents of the town that wouldn't necessarily, I mean, they may fall into one of those other categories, but of those three pieces, I agree 100%, there's gotta be a process in how we do it, but I'd rather not sit here and nominate two people, I mean, there's 6,000 people in town. You know, I know, I look forward to Ed's phone calls, and whenever there's a drought issue or snow, so do we have the ability of email notification through the code RED, all citizens have signed up, that we could do, this is available on the website, here's the where, this is new, make, open it up for a week, how do you submit the applications with a narrative as possibly as why do you want to be? And then maybe as a group of five of us, we go through the 4,200 responses. Big people, but.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
And I'm sure Tammy will help us with Facebook.
Sure, no, I think that's a valid idea. I mean, the challenge is always to get the word out, I'm never convinced how many people really look at the website to understand what's there, and even though we've got a certain number of people that follow us here or look at the meeting after on, you know, after the meeting's over, I don't know how else to get the word out, so.
And when that's available, I can send it to, as Chair of Norris, I can have Eliza send it out to all the parents within Norris.
Okay, that'd be a good idea.
The vast majority of them are all residents.
Yeah.
It's just another way to get the info out there.
All right, so what we would want to do is to have. So what we would want to do is to have more of, this is sort of our own internal structure in a way, so what we would want would be more of a narrative to explain what's happening and why we'd wanna do it, okay?
My last comment, and then I'll be quiet.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Should we print that the goal is to have the potential final impact not in this December's budget, but a year from here if we're not gonna be starting until October?
Right.
Because in December we'll start the budget, now maybe there'll be some easy, long-term fruit that we can grab.
Might be a couple, couple simple things, but yeah.
Looking for a kind of the detailed report over a 12-month period that we would incorporate, not this budget, but the following budget.
But I think we're really looking for a long-term plan, you know, eventually out of this, but certainly any immediate relief that we can get in this or next fiscal year is important, but going forward, we need to have a more comprehensive plan.
It lets people know that this is probably gonna be out of minimum 16 months.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. And to your point, Rena, about sort of thin on the, on the public, would you recommend then having four people from the public rather than the three or whatever we had here?
No, not necessarily, I just wanted to just not say that the criteria had to be that somebody was in their career.
Okay. But still, somebody with financial management or human resource management, I think, is still...
I agree.
Okay. So the next step then would be to draft some sort of a narrative to go along with this to be able to be distributed. Is that something you would delegate to me to do, or would you like to do, somebody else volunteer, and we come back and review it at the next meeting? How do we wanna handle that? Just so that we're all clear on what we're doing.
Well, I'm willing to take a shot at drafting it, but then I'd like to work with someone before.
Okay.
You know, another set of eyes for me always.
I can help you, Fran, same.
Okay. Joyce volunteering to help you?
Go ahead.
All right. Okay, so we'll leave that to you guys, and then to bring it to us for the 14th? Is that okay?
Okay.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, let's see where...
All can expect a call from me.
All right. Anything on the Greenway update, Ed? I don't know if there is often.
That, other than what I had put forward in my administrator's report, that I was reaching out to Mass Trails to see if that could be extended for an additional year.
And do we know if, through our, our legal folks, if they've already reached out to the railroad itself yet or anything like that?
They were putting a few pieces in place, my understanding was that they would be actually making contact with them for the specifics within the next week.
All right. Any questions on that? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Department Head Laptop Deployment Update. We're still deploying laptops, what's happening?
Well, I'm getting frustrated with it, because we actually had two dates, which would have been last Tuesday and today to do laptop deployment, and when the technician came out last week to do it, he didn't get here until about noon time, and he started on the police chief's laptop, and it took him just about the rest of the afternoon to do that one. When the technician left, laptop was working fine, then Ian took it home and used it remotely and brought it back in, and the profiles had changed, and then he started having issues with it, so I started complaining about that, and instead of coming back today, the technician came back yesterday, and the first charge was to finish and make the police chief's laptop the way it should be, which it seems like he was able to do, but it took him most of the afternoon again, and he didn't get here until close to noon, so there was two days assignment, which I expected to get six to eight laptops actually deployed and installed, was one, so...
So when are they coming back again?
We're waiting for two more dates from them now.
That's crazy. So we at least have, at least three or four that I'm aware of, right? I mean...
What, what's that?
We have at least three or four more to deploy.
We have seven more to deploy.
Seven more.
The assessors is waiting for theirs.
Right, they were supposed to get, they were supposed to be today, but...
Well, we have to bring this up to the Tech Committee tomorrow night, too, and I mean, if, I don't know what they can do about it, I mean, they're not in charge of it, obviously, but I mean, I mean, David Rooks has been working with you, I know, to try and push these guys along, but I, I'm definitely disappointed in the level of service, I mean, just because we bought all the laptops from this company, and one would think that they would be interested in getting them up and rolling for us and giving us some priority, so...
Yeah, I know it's a busy time of year with all the schools starting up and they're doing that, but like I said, I haven't been real thrilled the last...
Have they been paid in full?
No.
What's that?
They have not been paid in, well, they've been paid for the laptops.
I'm just asking if they've been paid in full.
Oh, well, they've been paid for the laptops, they haven't been paid for installation that they have done so far.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't know what else we can do to try and, I assume you're dealing with the head of the company or somebody to make this happen, right?
Absolutely.
So I mean, it's, you know...
In fact, David Rooks and I had a, you know, go-to video meeting with them a week and a half ago to set up the two dates that we had.
Okay. All right, well, this will be a topic tomorrow night, I'm sure, at the Tech Committee, too, so, okay. Next one, Employee Short-Term Disability Extension Approval, do you wanna just address that briefly? It's just something we have to sign?
Yes, and then you have it in your packets, and we had an employee that was on approved short-term disability, that this is actually an extension of about two and a half weeks, extension for additional physical therapy that is required, so my recommendation would be that the Select Board approve that extension.
Okay. Could I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make it, so move.
Okay, second, please.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other business that cannot wait until the next?
We gotta appoint Ed as the signer for the...
Regular meeting, yep. Thank you.
I just wanna say tomorrow, good luck to all the kids starting school on September 1st for a healthy and happy, happy school year.
I remember what the red flashing lights on a big yellow vehicle mean.
Yes, yeah. They haven't seen in a while, exactly.
You're really frustrated with the big truck coming down.
So, okay, so two things, maybe, did you want to do the one PCF?
There's one PCF, which is in your packet, but when I was copying over the list from the PTP website, I did not add one in addition to those, so there's a PCF for Dennis Senical, the water technician, in here, which would be retroactive to July 1st, 2021, and that should have an amended salary or hourly rate, in this case, it's an hourly rate, it was put in at $29.79, the amended rate, which would be a 4% increase, should be $29.22, so I would ask that the Select Board do that one under any other business.
Is that 4% or 6%?
That's 4%. The $29.79, which was, what was originally put in for was the 6%.
So now it's reduced to $29.22.
Okay, I don't...
I don't believe...
I don't have that.
At the very last, very last, from the back.
The one I have is $29.79.
What's before us is $29...
$79.
$79, that's what we tabled, so I believe the Select Board has the authority to amend it, and that's what we're being asked to do, amend it down to the 4%, which would be $29.22.
Right, okay. Yeah, this is the one we had tabled that's been around for, yeah, almost a month, probably, yeah? Maybe? Okay, so with that, that's great, it's funny?
Yeah, I will look at it.
Okay. All right. Could I have a motion if we're ready to do that?
I'll approve the amended amount.
Amended amount of...
For Dennis Senical to $29...
$22.
$22.
Retroactive to July...
Retroactive to 7/1.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded that?
John.
John. All right, now, other, other business that can't wait, there was the idea that we might need to reappoint Ed as the interim accountant for a short amount of time.
I'll make a motion to approve Ed as the temporary accountant for, and be able to sign until the end of September.
That should be fine. Thank you.
Motion on the floor, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion, so I get that it's to the end of September, but should the other caveat be until a successor is named, in the event that a town accountant accepts the position before the end of September?
Yes. Okay.
You know what I mean?
Be careful with your wording. Accepts or is in, is in place?
Uh-huh.
Is sworn into office? There we go.
Sworn into office.
Yeah, okay, is sworn in?
Yeah.
Okay, so September 30th or the date, when the new person takes...
Is sworn in.
Is sworn in.
Whichever happens first.
Whichever happens first. Okay. Is that, is that doable, Ed? Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll have a second to that amended motion, then, please?
I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Can I just say that I appreciate Ed, I know that we've had a long time without an accountant and an assistant, and also with all the COVID additional things, you know, there's been a lot of criticism about not having an accountant, and we haven't been at liberty to tell all the different things that have been happening behind the scenes, but I just wanna say thank you for all you're doing.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you, you wouldn't have to worry about, even if you hadn't put in that caveat of until someone else is sworn into the position, because as soon as someone is in that position, if that wasn't in place, I'd be resigning in a second, so I didn't have to do that.
I'm guessing it's on your fun burn, huh?
Yeah. That one would be.
Good. All right, thanks, guys. We'll keep on moving.
Thank you.
We've got several personnel change forms to deal with.
Would it be appropriate to take them up as a batch?
Um...
With the exception of the resignation?
Um...
I'd like to talk about at least the election workers separately, if you don't mind.
Yeah, and I think the, the assessors, was there any additional, that was an emergency one, is that right? I'm just gonna...
There's both an emergency and a regular.
A regular.
Assessors, 20...
All right. Let's, let's take them in mini groups, so the assessors, and then the fire, and then the election workers, that's basically, and then, it won't take long, I'm sure.
I'll make a motion to approve Janine Domina as the emergency and also interim assessor's office. Official title is increase her hours up until 16 hours, I believe, per week.
Going from 12 to 16 hours?
Up to 16.
Up to 16?
All right. In the assessors' office.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? There's just one thing on the interim, when they had mentioned for 12 weeks, so they're doing this through November 12, 2021?
Yeah.
Apparently, and this is staying at the same, same rate?
Same rate, yeah.
So working more hours, but staying at the same rate?
Yeah, just to help cover the office more.
Okay, all right. All right.
Yeah, the only thing, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just pointing out that by doing this, we're acknowledging that we're gonna have to transfer funds.
Yep, and I think they included this.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And, well, I guess I have a question on that, why would funds have to be transferred, given that we're at the beginning of a fiscal year?
Because it's over budget for the line.
Budgeted for X number of hours, you're increasing the hours.
Got it, I'm sorry, okay, very good, thank you. All right, we had a motion and a second, I believe? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, a pair for the fire department, we have, let's see, Colin Dearborn as an on-call-as-needed, a part-time, non-benefited firefighter, and Russell Hatch the second as a part-time, non-benefited firefighter EMT as needed. Could I have a motion regarding those two?
So move.
Okay. A second, please?
The, the original or the second?
I'll be the second.
All right. Okay, all right. Any discussion on those, the...
I have a question about one of them.
Yep, go ahead.
So, this, this person lives in Monson, so I'm just curious if it's on-call, I know that where I work, it's like, there's an expectation that you not exceed a certain, like, you have to be able to respond within a certain bit of time, so I don't know what the story is, I mean, I'm sure John has a plan for that, I'm just curious, just does seem like if it's an on-call position, is that a consideration?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody know? Do you know?
Don't know. And that would be for the person who is the EMT.
Firefighter.
Firefighter and EMT.
Firefighter, EMT, on-call as needed.
Mm-hmm.
Right, all the, all the, other than the chief himself, which is a full-time position, all of the rest of the, whether they're firefighters or firefighter EMTs or firefighter paramedics are basically either part-time or on-call, part-time, they're all as needed.
Right, but I think the question was, in terms of distance, in terms of the ability to get here quickly, if there was a radius, is that, if I understood your question?
I'm speculating here, but I'm guessing he would be, he or she, who is it? He would be assigned regular shifts to cover, but probably would not be called in after midnight if it was their off night because of the distance, like, they have an actual structure fire.
Yeah.
But he's probably looking to cover it an eight-hour shift on the ambulance.
Right.
Right, or as an on-call, they could be basically not working, but stationed in the mobile building next to the fire station.
Well, basically, just says will not affect the budget, adds to the number of folks available in the event of a fire, so...
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I would just appreciate if you mentioned that, I'm just curious if we, like, obviously, I'm not gonna, I mean, I'm not gonna approve it, but I'm just curious if there's some sort of rule or that that, someone that lived that distance would only be used, you know, not just on-call only? I'm just curious, I hear you.
I can find out, for real.
Yeah, okay. But we have a motion and a second, I believe, so are we ready to vote? If so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then next, we have PCFs for two election wardens and a variety of election workers. Now, just refresh my memory, we had appointed these people a meeting or two ago, am I not correct on that?
We appointed these people a couple of meetings ago, but...
Yeah, now we're putting them on payroll.
Probably about, I don't know, a year and a half ago, we did get the ruling that these people were previously paid as, on a vendor warrant.
Right.
And we got word that, from the IRS, that they had to be paid on a payroll warrant.
Correct, okay.
Well, once we made that change, not only did we appoint them, it's followed up now because it's a payroll warrant with PCS, so this is something a year and a half ago we would not have seen.
Hmm, okay.
We would have only seen the first part. We would have only seen the appointment, correct.
Yeah, okay. So a couple of these, I guess I'm, I'm not sure if these are just, if these are crossed out or not, but we have, let's just start at the beginning, we have...
Can I just make a change? Can I say something? We actually, this is the first year that we actually followed the rules, no fault of anybody else in the past, but the process for hiring election workers was not done the way it's supposed to be done in the state of Massachusetts. So we had a document that we used as a guide, that Ed reached out to the party chairs, Republican and Democrat, got names, and then no later than June 30th, the registrar submitted the names to the Select Board, so we've been following, actually, for the first time. In addition, what Ed said was, now it's part of the operating budget, so now we're getting these PCFs. But I'm not really sure, I, I was told that at the last election that somebody wasn't called, like, the person told me personally that she never got a call to work the election. called, like the person told me personally that she never got a call to work the election. So I just want to say that there's two positions here that are election warden, which I don't know what that is, and we didn't vote or recommend that anybody be a warden versus election worker. I don't know if that's our job to do that or if that's what Lucy put forth, to be election warden versus worker. The whole point of this, given our voting rights discussion in the country right now, is that the process is fair and somewhat equitable.
Yeah.
And I think both of the people that are selected as warden are from the Republican Party. I just feel like, I don't personally feel comfortable voting on this without some input from Lucy and a commitment that there will be a process for hiring these folks that's fair and equitable and that there's an understanding and discussion about what's the difference between a warden and worker and how is that decision made? We're not having an election anytime soon, so I don't really feel like we have a lot of, so I'm just going to ask if we could consider tabling this and get Lucy's input on this and commitment to actually have a system where if the whole point of this is to have it be fair and you reach, you start by reaching out to the party chairs for names, then I want assurances that it's, the process is also going to be carried out fairly.
And were these all the people that we had appointed? It seems like we had, we have here two wardens and one, two, three, four, five workers. It seemed like there were more than that that we appointed, but I.
Total of seven, sounds about right.
Or maybe that is the seven with these two here?
Do you know the distinction? I mean, I know what the warden is. I looked it up. It's the person that oversees all of the election workers.
Right.
Was that, was that, how was that decision made?
Yep.
What's the distinction between the two?
Is that anything that the registrars do or no?
I would follow, it proudly is something that the registrars do, but.
If we could just understand the process.
I would want that kind of confirmed, just like Brini would.
Okay. If you could just get that information from Lucy or have her come and speak to that next time, that would be great. Do you mind?
No. Okay. So you want to postpone all of these then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. Any opposition to that?
No, I'm not opposed to it. The only thing I would ask is since we are going to propose this, could I get a copy? And maybe Joy would like it as well of whatever procedure Brini just referenced with the chairs and that, so we, so at least I can understand the process that's supposed to be followed.
Great. Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you it's Master of Law, Chapter 54, Section 12. You want to make a note of it?
Well, that's, again, I don't have it in front of me, but that sounds like how you select the people within the registrar's office, not how you, how you select the election workers. The election workers are usually under the authority of the town clerk. So if I could just see whatever is being referenced, so I could read it and make sure I understand.
I'll send it out to you.
Okay. That'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I guess that there was confusion too, because it's got a one-year appointment as needed, but it looks like it's crossed off.
Right.
So I guess I wasn't clear that the X, the marks on the back of these?
Yeah, and every, every one but one, maybe one but one is crossed off.
It's an unusual process and the one-year appointment would probably work because the process is to send out to the chairs of the two committees, just like you do for Board of Registrars. They may or may not suggest any names for this, which get forward along to the town clerk and the Board of Registrars. And then, and I'm trying to remember the exact dates. I think it's not before July 15th nor after August 10th shall the select board appoint the election workers. So basically I took the fact that, okay, if the select board can't appoint after August 10th, then the term starts on August 10th and basically ends on August 10th.
Well, we did appoint before August, it's actually the 15th. It says no later than June 30th, the registrar shall submit to the select board the names of the person. So I have the whole sequence here and it's August. If the select board fails to make an appointment by August 15th, the registrar shall appoint election offices from a list of party members submitted by the party chairs. So we were all within the dates. I mean, I think up till now, I think we've followed for the first time what's, the way it's supposed to go. I just have questions about the final PCFs in terms of the way they were decided upon.
Broken out.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And get clarity for that. Okay. With that, there's one more PCF, I believe. This is a resignation, Richard Holman, the COA van driver. Resignation was effective, I believe, back in June. Is that right? Last working date, last date on payroll was June 10th.
I approve his resignation, Richard Holman.
Okay.
Question for discussion, or I'll second for discussion.
Second? Okay. Yep.
Under the reason for change, it doesn't say resignation, says separation, so that implies termination? Saying that's what the form says.
Yeah, I think there were.
Reason for change, separation.
Personal considerations, John.
If it really should be a resignation.
Yes.
Then.
Yeah, okay.
The form should be, because the form implies.
Which part of the form is it?
He's reading here. He's right. It's where it says resignation, separation or retirement. It was corrected. Separation morally less means at our invitation.
Right.
Right.
As opposed to resignation.
Resignation for personal reasons.
Right.
So this is really a resignation, right? So, okay.
I'm assuming so.
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay.
So I would just want to change the form so 10 years from now, when somebody looks at this, nobody believes that Mr. Holman was terminated.
Good point.
Well, and the other thing, if we look at the other form, the separation form, it says other is checked.
Yes.
So we need to get it cleared up.
Yeah, the second one, I mean, why not put resignation on the second form as well?
Yep.
So.
Either way, I'm happy to accept it. I just think the two forms are in conflict with each other.
Yeah, no, I agree. The form should be correct or they should be there, whether this is just simply resignation, which we think it is. Do we need to go ahead and approve it tonight, but then have Ed check this with Joan first and then?
I already talked about that today. I think we can just accept it as a resignation.
Oh, accept it as a resignation.
Change the terminology.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay.